Good morning, everyone. Pursuant to applicable law and my determination that attendance by remote means is necessary because an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to the declared public health disaster caused by COVID-19, this meeting is conducted by video conference. We will now have a roll call vote to establish quorum. And I will remind aldermen to please make your microphones unmuted when your name is called and then return to mute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Good morning. I apologize I have guests outside my door. So if you can't hear me, I'll repeat your name. Alderman Laspada.
Here.
Alderman Hopkins.
Present.
Alderman Dow.
Here.
Alderman King.
Present.
Alderman Hairston. Alderman Sawyer.
Here.
Alderman Mitchell.
Present.
Alderman Harris.
Here.
Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Zelaski Garza.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Cardness.
Here.
Alderman Quinn.
Here.
Alderman Burke.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here in West Englewood.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Moore.
Present.
Alderman Curtis.
Here.
Alderman O'Shea.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Tabara.
Present.
Alderman Scott.
Present.
Alderman Sichu Lopez.
Present.
Aldman Maldonado. Aldman Burnett.
Present.
Aldman Davis, present. Aldman Irvin.
Aldman Irvin is present.
Aldman Talafaro.
Present.
Aldman Boyes.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Aldman Cardona. Alderman Black is back.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Asanda.
Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Present.
Aldman Viegas.
Present.
Aldman Metz.
Present.
Aldman Spisato.
Nick Spisato is here.
Aldman Nugent.
Present.
Aldman Vasquez.
Present.
Aldman Vasquez is present. Aldman Napolitano.
Present.
Aldman Riley.
Present.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Aldman Tunny.
Present.
Aldman Gardner.
Present.
Aldman Kapman.
Present.
Aldman Martin.
Present.
Aldman Osterman.
Present.
Aldman Haddon.
Present.
Aldman Silverstein.
Present.
Alderman Hairston.
Aldman Maldonado is present.
Alderman Hairston is present. Aldman Maldonado is present. Anyone else?
Aldman Cardona is present.
Aldman Cardona is present. Anyone else? All right, Peter?
Your Honor, there are 48 members present.
There are 48 members present. We have a quorum. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will have the invocation by Pastor William Hall of St. James Community Church. Pastor Hall, the floor is yours.
Well, good morning to each of you. I want to, first of all, say thank you to those of you who are with us today. Thank you to my aldermen, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Scott, Alder Lady Dow, Alder Lady Stephanie Moore, Alderman Moore, those who have helped me along my journey, and thank you, Alder Lady Nugent, for the invite via Erika Wasniak. Let us bow our heads as we do so, and as you center yourself, see your community better, whatever hopes you have for the place in which you lead. It is in that that we come to God, first of all, to say thank you for allowing us to live another day. We thank you that you've given us strength through the ups and downs of the last year or so, God, you've allowed us to continue to stand strong. And so, God, may love and respect be on the agenda today. May the things in which we discuss, the things in which we seek to figure out, may it lead to a better city, a city of love and unity. God, we ask that you continue to give strength to our mayor. We ask that you continue to watch over her, continue to guide her, continue to bless our daughter and her wife. God, keep them together. God, we ask that you continue to show us the way. We thank you for those who serve, all the way from our garbage men and women to those who watch guard over different spaces in this city. Touch our children, touch our teachers, touch those who keep us safe. But God, we thank you for the place we call Chicago. May it continue to be a beacon of light and hope to this nation and even this world. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen, nephew. Amen.
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 Thank you, Pastor Hall. At this time, we will begin the public comment period. Madam Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. The first speaker is Linda Marlovits.
Linda Marlovits is not here.
Our next speaker is Namali Nari Nariobi.
Dear Mayor and City Council members, good morning to everyone. My name is Nirmalaridhi, and I am resident of this city. I thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and I would like to strongly urge the City Council to vote against the resolution, R 2020583. The resolution is sadly misleading and pays no e to the human rights of more than 30,000 people, persecuted minorities who lost everything and were forced to flee to India to save their lives and dignity. Currently, they live in refugee camps in different parts of India. This resolution criticizes the CAA, which was passed in the Indian parliament in a fully transparent and democratic process, with a majority votes to help refugees in the surrounding bureaucracies in its neighborhood. On the contrary, the CAA protects the human rights of persecuted religious minorities coming to India from countries such as Pakistan, Afghanistan, and Bangladesh. It is neither applicable to any Indian citizen nor takes away anyone's citizenship. Even U.S. and U.K. have enacted and executed similar laws. Christians, Hindus, Sikhs, and other minorities are constitutionally discriminated against in these bureaucracies. Pakistan, Bangladesh, and Afghanistan are bureaucracies where a minority cannot become a president, not because they may not have votes, but because they are constitutionally prohibited from doing so. A report from CIF ORB UK says thousands of females from religious minorities are abducted, forcibly converted, and then married off to their abductors every year. Do we have any sympathy toward their dignity and human rights? From 2016 to 18, under current Indian government, around 1,595 Pakistan migrants and 391 Afghan Muslims were given Indian citizenship. India is now taking its rightful place as a beacon of hope to hope such people, just like the Statue of Liberty has been over the centuries, for those that seek a better life. This council should applaud the efforts taken by the Indian government to provide sanctuary to those deprived minorities that replace the city of Chicago's standing as a sanctuary city. In my personal interactions with refugees who came from Pakistan told me that they will never go back to Pakistan. City councils should invite these voiceless people and listen to their stories before making any decision about CAA. For those concerned about non-inclusion of Jews, stop clutching at trots. We all know that there are barely any left in these countries after this systemic persecution. This resolution also talks about NRC Nassau and blaming current government for its implementation. This is historical remnant from 1985 that must be implemented because of Supreme Court directives. I sincerely hope the City Council will not gaslight our concerns and will consider all the facts, not be misled by lies.
Thank you, Ms. Nari Nariobi. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Cyrus Rab.
Hello.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you to the City Council for giving me this opportunity to speak to you, all of you. Before I start, I would like the City Council to know that I have a special guest with me who will share some words at the end of my brief statement. I would like to comment on the Chicago resolution honoring India's independence and democracy. First, I would like to thank the Health and Human Relations Committee for passing the resolution unanimously. As someone born and raised in Chicago, a child of immigrant parents, I take the matter of discrimination of minorities in any place or of any group very seriously. This country is founded on principles of equality, equal representation, and human rights. These are Chicago values. In India, we are witnessing the world's largest democracy lay the foundations of disenfranchising the rights of millions of minorities in this country. This same country is laying siege on its farmers as well. India is a country with a rich history of diverse voices, but Indian Prime Minister Modi, like former President Trump, has been a very divisive ruler. When Modi was Minister of Gujarat, he presided over programs where over 1,000 Indians were killed, mostly Muslims. This is not some outlier for him. Modi belongs to a militant xenophobic organization called the RSS, which explicitly draws inspiration from Adolf Hitler. The RSS ideology says India is for Hindus only. We have a chance to address injustice with our words, and I stand before you, along with 20 organizations made up of hundreds of Hindus, Muslims, Christians, Jews, and Sikhs, and Buddhist supporters, all of whom unequivocally condemn the recent actions of the Modi government to link citizenship to religion, thereby stripping millions of Muslim and Jewish Indians, amongst others, of their citizenship and their rights. I wanted to close by asking all of you this: What are those who oppose this resolution really standing for? Is it hate? Let's not squander this opportunity and find ourselves on the wrong side of history. I urge City Council to pass the resolution honoring India's independence and democracy. Thank you for that. My special guest today is Chicago actor Michael Shannon. He is co-founder of a red orchid theater in Chicago's Old Town neighborhood and is a two-time Oscar-nominated actor. Mike, the floor is yours. Hello there. I just want to thank the City Council for this time and reiterate my support for this Chicago resolution that honors India's independence and democracy. As Dr. King said, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. So I really hope, as someone who loves the city, that we do the right thing and then pass this resolution. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your comments. Our next speaker is Ms. Juned Ahmed.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, dear aldermen, and all the women. I strongly support Resolution R 202583 and urge you to vote yes for the resolution today. The updated resolution was negotiated thanks to Deputy Mayor Samir Mayekar, who consulted the resolution broadly across the community, and now it is one and a half pages and includes language, includes language, word for word, from Biden's website. I'm proud to be a citizen of the world's oldest democracy, and I'm here to draw your attention to the current deteriorating state of affairs of the country of my birth, the world's oldest democracy, India. In the last few years, there has been several events that are of grave concern, but we do not have time to go over them here. But as we celebrate the Black History Month, I want to remind everyone that lynching has become a common occurrence in India. And yes, you heard me right, lynching. And the perpetrators are rewarded instead of being punished. India is rapidly descending into a totalitarian, majoritarian, ethno-nationalist society. I do not have time in these three minutes to go over the long list of human rights violations, but all you need to do is read the Western media. Yes, the Western media, because the Indian media is now, to a large extent, pretty much controlled by the government. The recent discriminatory citizenship laws and the laws against the farmers resulted in millions of people taking to streets, and the government is reacting to these peaceful protests by arresting these people, blocking supply of foods to these protesters, and now blocking internet from the areas where protesters are gathered. Now, I want you to think about how you would feel. Hear me. How you would feel if you cannot marry the person you love? Yes, this law has been passed in the northern state of Uttar Pradesh, where consenting adult Muslim man and a consenting adult Hindu woman cannot marry, as per the law in this state. And lastly, I want to conclude with thanking Alderman Maria Haddon for sponsoring this resolution. Thank you for being bold enough to bring these human rights violations to the notice of this committee and the city of Chicago. I conclude with my strong support for Resolution R 202583 and urge you to vote yes for the resolution today. Thank you for this opportunity. Goodbye.
Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, good morning. My name is Kiran. Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, good morning. My name is Kiran, and I'm a resident of this city. I would like to thank you all for your service to the community. I love this city, and I refuse to move out, despite the beautiful weather, especially in the month of February. Chicago is a sanctuary city and a welcoming home for Indian immigrants such as me. I'm fortunate to move from one vibrant democracy to another. However, recent occurrences have made me wonder if this city is truly what it claims to be. For one, why is it so difficult to talk to the sponsor and co-sponsors of this resolution? They have continuously ignored phone calls, emails, and requests for virtual meetings. I'm here to oppose Resolution R 2020583, an anti-India resolution. This resolution is based on half truths and some lies, and under the guise of praising India, castigates and condemns India for fulfilling its duty in protecting human rights. For example, the claim from the vested interest groups has been that there is human right violation in Jammu and Kashmir. Please understand, for the past 70 years, the people of Kashmir are missing fundamental rights due to the Article 370, which was a temporary provision. The article's abrogation by the current government has provided Kashmiri women, minorities, and the LGBTQ community necessary rights. I'm perplexed as to how the state of Jammu and Kashmir's progress is ignored. If you follow the latest news, you can assure yourself that minorities in JNK get the same benefits as the rest of the country, the Indian Constitution provides. Women married outside of JNK can inherit what is rightfully theirs. Mobile and landline phones, SMS, unrestricted access to social media, and cable television are fully operational. The Union Cabinet approved an incentive scheme worth $4 billion USD to bring industrial development to JNK. Recently, a group of foreign diplomats from 23 nations and European Union visited JNK and were extremely impressed with its growth. Moreover, Kashmir has been a victim of state-sponsored terrorism from Pakistan, a globally accepted fact over the last four decades. While one sponsor speaks about how she listens to South Asians and other talks about how this is all about human rights, this resolution does not even mention the victims of terrorism in Kashmir and the role of Pakistan. Speaking about South Asians or human rights sounds hollow if they will not present the truth entirely. Some people will speak about unrelated matters, like the previous comments, and will try to link to this resolution. Request the council members not to get distracted. The proposed by India are so much aligned to the philosophy of the great city, Chicago. India has made every community feel at home, a country that treats all its citizens equally. I urge you to vote against the resolution and live the spirit of Chicago. Also, just like how taking specifically about black lives does not mean that other lives do not matter, speaking about oppression, minorities do not mean the majority does not matter. Exclusion does not equate to discrimination.
Thank you, Mr. Gajendra. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Imram Tassi.
Good morning. My name is Imran Desai. I work with Rush Hospital. Today, I am calling in support of Resolution R 202053. Last year, more than 53 people have been killed as a result of riots in Delhi. More than 500 people were injured, and economic loss of more than $3.5 million has been estimated. If you look at the picture of the riots it's Asia, then you will not be able to recognize whether this is India or Syria. Riots started after the inflammatory speech of Kapur Mishra, a ruling party BJP leader came and attacked Muslims in general and protesters who were protesting against NRC and CAA laws. Laws which systematically ask only Muslims to prove their citizenship in India. Neither police reactions during the riots was very astonishing. You would expect the police to protect the citizens, but many videos have surfaced that show that the police themselves were piling stones. Videos of some police personnel smashing the CCTV cameras have also surfaced. This all are well documented in the investigation of MST International India. A fact-finding report of civil rights group has found out that during the riots, the Delhi police did not answer any help calls between 48 to 72 hours. That means people kept calling the police, asking for protection, to stop the rioters, and to prevent their houses from being burned down. But there was no response from the police. When the trust of the public in the police is shattered, then there is a sole remaining institution upon which a common man can raise his expectation, and that is country's judiciary. On 27 February, the Delhi High court delivered a judgment that they rebuked the Delhi police for not filing police complaint against Kapur Mishra, Anurag Thakur, and other BJP party leaders that have been delivering inflammatory speeches, and they ordered the Delhi police to register police complaints against them. But right on the night of 27 February, the judge that took the decision was transferred by government. After riots, the BJP ID cell trends a call for the economic boycott of Muslims on Twitter. There were copy-based tweets from the thousands of fake accounts. For example, one tweet says, "My driver was Muslim. I asked my father to fire him." But you could wonder why the BJP is doing this? Why is it creating this divide in India? Answer is the same reason why many forces trying to divide America using racism and gain power, creating fear among Americans. Finally, democracy is not just a right to vote, it is right to live in dignity without fear. This resolution will send a strong message to the fascist BJP ruling government. I have a sincere request to all of you to vote yes to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tassi. Our next speaker is Maggie Liston.
Maggie Liston is not here.
Our next speaker is Ilyaaz Sayad.
Honorable and distinguished gathering, a very good morning to you all. I thank you all for taking the time out for hearing us out on a very important issue that is currently rampant in India, in the form of the farmers' protest against the draconian laws that are being introduced by the current regime in India. It is but a shame that the Indian farmers have to face such enormous hardship during the rough weather in which the poor farmers are out in the open without a care of their own selves, but rather are worried about the whole of India and its poor citizens, who would face the brunt if the proposed laws are brought into practice, which will in turn empower certain corporates to buy the farmers' produce at a very cheap price and sell it to the consumers at exorbitant prices, and would have no respect to either the farmers nor the most common Indian consumer. But the current regime is adamant and would still want to proceed with the same task without even consulting the farmer unions and other experts in the market. So much so that many independent social workers are being targeted and are being arrested and being clapped with cold cases. Why? Just because they are raising their voices, cricket on, and bring to the fore the conscientious of such laws if implemented? As you all are aware, that the right-wing political party in power is tarping at nothing. What with atrocities on the Kashmiris and then the CAA, NRC, and many other forms of atrocities against the Indian minorities, which mainly consist of Muslims, Christians, Dalits, Sikhs, and others? And I should also add here that I'm an Indian-American with roots still in India, and I'm not against anyone but current regime in India, which is but working against the most common Indian, which is what disturbs me as an Indian, as the most common and most poor Indian is suffering immensely under this government. And we still have time to raise our voice and stop this evil from taking over, lest nothing would succeed. Even the UNHRC experts raised concerns over Indian government's treatment of Kashmir and to the effects. I request you to please raise your concerns during the Resolution R 2020583 and raise your voice in favor of the Indian farmers and humanity who have, and the Indian farmers who have been out in the chill for this season, almost from three months, and still going strong even after death during the protest against a very biased law, which will harm the Indian economy like never before. Our earnest request to you all is to please have a look into this and support the farmers, which will go a long way in helping this oppressed soul, and we will be ever thankful to you for this kind gesture. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Said. Our next speaker is Ravindra Patari.
Ravindra Patari is not here.
Our next speaker is Javir Singh.
Good morning, Chicago City Council members. My name is Javir Singh, and I support Resolution 2020583. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I voice my concern about the farmers in India and the human rights issue they're facing as the resolution addresses violence against peaceful protesters and journalists. Imagine millions of people in the street for three months during the winter months, women, elderly, and children. Why would they sacrifice their life living in the street to protest? Well, it's about their livelihood and their future. I, being part of the Indian diaspora and living in Chicago for a very long time, have friends who are protesting in India. I'm deeply concerned of what's going on at the moment. My, many faiths, religions, and regions of India have shown solidarity and want the repeal of these laws. The government and security forces have responded to the protesters with unlawful detention, media censorship, tear gas, and physical brutality. Indian government suspended internet services in and around protesting sites and have arrested several journalists who are documenting police violence. Over a dozen U.S. lawmakers and dozens of celebrities, such as Rihanna, Greta, Dunberg, Susan Sarandon, and our very own Lupe Fiasco, have voiced their support for the farmers and the injustices that they're facing. To add insult to injury, Indian government is creating a false narrative that farmers are terrorists. They're blocking the streets when actually they're protesting in the outskirts of Delhi and are attacking police. In fact, Indian government has barricaded the farmers so others cannot join, and they do not get access to water, food, and toilets. Over 200 farmers have died in relationship to the protests, but Prime Minister Modi has not had time to tweet about other countries and the events, but that has given, not given any condolences to or word about the fallen farmers of India. Many of us in the diaspora have relatives and family, and we have witnessed the brutality the farmers have faced when coming into the Capitol to protest. Amnesty International said that the Delhi police have time and time again attacked the peaceful protesters and violated their human rights. In fact, they have had to close their office in India in 2020, citing government attacks. I support the Resolution 2020583 and urge all the elders to vote yes. Thank you very much.
Peter, you are on mute, sir. We did not hear your last comments.
I want to thank Ms. Singh for her comments and just remind everyone that speakers are not allowed to yield their time to another speaker. Our next speaker is Mr. Omar Rashdi.
Mr. Omar Rashdi, please press star six on your Mr. Omar Rashdi, please press star six on your phone to unmute.
Excuse me, I guess my name is Mohammed Rashid. I'm not sure if my name is spelled out correctly or I have the other time to speak.
Sir, are you Mr. Omar Rashdi?
No, I'm not.
Have you signed up for speaking today?
Yes, I have signed up for speaking today and my name is Mohammed Rashid. I guess my number was number eleven.
So you are Mr. Rash- you are not Mr. Rashdi?
No, I am not. My name is Mohammed Rashid. I have also signed up for speaking. My comment.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rashdi. I don't have you listed as one of the speakers for today's meeting.
Yesterday I was called and I was told that my number to speak was eleven-one-one.
Peter, if we could, since the gentleman is here, he believes that he signed up and he got notice, why don't we let him speak?
Mr. Rashdi, you can talk. Please provide your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, respected council members. My name is Mohammed Rashid. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak in support of Resolution R 2020 583. I join all the other supporters of this resolution, requesting the council to pass this resolution in solidarity to people of India. Today I am going to speak about how the freedom of speech is being choked to death and the state of the news media under Mr. Narendra Modi has been terrible. As reported by New York Times, since Mr. Modi came to power in 2014, they say his government has tried to control the country's news media, especially the airwaves like no other prime minister indicates. Mr. Modi has shrewdly cultivated the media to build a cult of personality that portrays him as the nation's selfless savior. Result of these atrocities quoted by Business Insider, India's media is losing its freedom and crackdowns on the press could get even worse. After years of being the voice that brought social change, the media in India is now being controlled and manipulated by the authorities. Journalists in India have been beaten, arrested, and forced to resign for trying to report news about the government or other contentious issues. The wire reports eleven journalists killed, forty-six attacked, twenty-seven cases of police action from Gauri lunges murder to defamation threats. Attacks on the media have become commonplace. BBC report says on August 5, 2019, the Indian government stripped Kashmir of its constitutionally guaranteed special status and split the region into two federally-run territories. A stringent curfew was imposed and thousands detained along with a communication blackout. Since the lockdown was brought into effect, no foreign journalist has been allowed by the Indian government to report from Kashmir. I would like to conclude with a request to the respected council members to vote in favor of this Resolution R 2020 583 for the democracy to prevail. And thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Rashdi, for your comments. Our next speaker is Renee Pattern.
Hi, my name is Renee. I'm a member of Democratized ComEd, the Ready for a Hundred Chicago Collective, representing community organizations across Chicago and with the Edgewater Environmental Coalition. I want you to all know that I support the municipalization of our city's electricity. This week is the Democratized ComEd Week of Action and today is our city elected official outreach day. Municipalization would provide an alternative revenue stream for the city, help us get renewable energy faster, and address longstanding environmental and racial injustice and root out a corrupt private company. I ask you to support the municipalization of our electricity distribution as well. The city is currently renegotiating its contract with ComEd, but the working people of Chicago can no longer afford to do business with this notoriously corrupt private company. ComEd has admitted to a bribery scandal in exchange for favorable legislation to raise electricity revenues by thirty percent in the past decade while their profits increased by fifty percent. This negatively affects all residents in Chicago who have been paying for this corruption for years. Enough is enough. I want you all to support the municipalization of our city's electricity distribution so that our utility is accountable to the residents of the city instead of wealthy shareholders. Democratized ComEd is also here for racial justice. To that end, residents across Chicago have been hunger striking with the tenth ward brave souls who are now in their twenty-first day of a hunger strike to stop general iron from becoming a neighbor to their schools, homes, and parks. They are putting their own health at risk to protect their loved ones in the left spaces. In addition to democratizing ComEd, stopping over-investing in police, I also ask you to stand up for your constituents and neighbors currently not eating. They haven't eaten for three Mondays and demand that the city, the mayor, all of you here, deny the general iron permit. I repeat that the strikers have not eaten for twenty-one days. This is how important this is to them and to so many of us who have joined the strike and done one or multiple days fast in solidarity. We look forward to further engagement with UMayor Lightfoot and all of you and larger efforts to improve Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patton, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you. Thank you. This concludes the public comment period. Next up are resolutions. Ladies and gentlemen, we have three resolutions for today. A memorial resolution for Karen Lewis, a resolution to recognize Black History Month, and a resolution to recognize the recent extraordinary snow response by city personnel. We will take those in order. First up is the resolution regarding Karen Lewis. I will call on Alderwoman. Do we have members of the city council that like to speak to this resolution honoring the life and legacy of Karen Lewis? Please use your raise your hand function. The chair recognizes Alderman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this resolution. I considered Karen Lewis a friend, a confidant, and someone that was really concerned about the children of the city of Chicago. I mourn her death, but I celebrate her life because she was truly a delight to be around. She was very engaging. She had a wit about her. And I just appreciated her presence and her advice during my tenure at city council when I first started out. I truly support this resolution and I wish her and her family nothing but the best. But it was an honor to have known and worked with Karen Lewis during the time that I did. Thank you, Madam President.
Taylor. Alderman Taylor, I believe you're still muted.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning. Karen Lewis was one of the first presidents of the Chicago Teachers Union who actually allowed parents and students to join the union to say what school should look like. Karen was a very humble woman and she loved the community in which she taught in. She was actually a chemistry teacher at King College Prep is when I had the chance to finally meet her and come in contact with her. I am forever grateful for Karen because she has truly led the charge of communities of definitely of color, making sure education is equitable around our communities. My blessings and prayers are out to Karen's family.
Thank you, Alderman Taylor. The chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam President, I too rise to be associated with this resolution. I didn't get to personally work with Karen Lewis. However, when I would meet her, she was very gracious and very kind to me. You know, and all the tributes that have been going around for her, I think, are very just. I had a conversation with a really good friend of mine the other day and we were just talking about losses in 2020 and how this is a great loss. And she was telling me a story about when she first started at King College Prep. She was going into leadership and like Alderman Taylor talked about, she was the chemistry teacher there. And this young lady was very young and trying to do what she wanted to do. And Karen kind of took her under her wing, even though she was in leadership because Karen had been there so long, took her under her wing and taught her how to be professional in the school setting, you know, how to dress, and kind of told her all the things that she would encounter as a black woman in education and being outspoken. And that just speaks to the kind of person that Karen Lewis was and how kind she was and how she wanted to look out for the greater school community and not just the children, but everybody in that school community. And so my condolences go out to her family and to all her siblings at CTU. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. The chair recognizes Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you so much, Madam President. You know, it's so fitting that this body is honoring Karen Lewis today because Karen Lewis was a quintessential Chicagoan. She was full of life. She said what came to her mind and she said it so well and so eloquently. She had such a sharp wit. She was hilarious. But she also cared so deeply about the people of the city, about the children that she served. And you will learn from the students that had her as a teacher just how great she was as an educator. You will hear from the people that got the opportunity to work alongside her just how committed and hardworking and brilliant she was. You know, I first met her in 2010. I was actually an intern with AFL-CIO and I had an opportunity to go to a restaurant in Little Village where she was speaking at a twenty-second ward IPO meeting. And I was wowed. I was amazed. She brought down the house. She spoke about how our schools were surviving after the horrible Bush era policy of no child left behind. She spoke about how we needed to defend public education, how we needed to defend our communities. And she put forward a clear, bold message of fully-funded public schools, of teachers that were respected as professionals, as a community that really invested in the future of our children. And so we owe Karen Lewis such a debt of gratitude for fighting to improve our Chicago public schools, for fighting to make sure that our teachers were empowered, that we had democracy in the workplace. Karen Lewis taught us so many important lessons. She taught us that when we fight, we win. She taught us that power conceives nothing without a demand. And she did it boldly in her way. We're going to miss Karen Lewis so much. And I hope that the city, we continue to honor her. I hope this isn't the last way that we honor her because she deserves to be honored by all of us for what she did for all of us. So Karen Lewis, to your family, we want to say thank you for allowing us to share in Ms. Lewis. To the Chicago Teachers Union family, to everyone that fought alongside her, we know that Karen Lewis vive y la lucha sigue. Rest in peace and power, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
You know, thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak here. And I'm glad Carlos just referenced that day in Little Village where he got to meet Karen Lewis for the first time. That was a meeting that I helped organize. Karen was a friend. And I remember that day like it was yesterday. She came in and talked about not just the importance of union organizing, not just about the importance of teachers and their stance as professionals, as leaders in our communities, but she talked about a sincere equity in our communities that wasn't just about education. It was about improvement of quality of life for all people, particularly working-class folks who in our society have gotten the short end of the stick. She was a fighter for the many. And that's how I'll remember her, as a fighter for the many, as a person who believed in being a mentor. I feel like I've been mentored by the great Karen Lewis and I truly believe that the word great needs to precede her name every time we say it. To all of my brothers and sisters at the CTU, to all of my brothers and sisters and the broader labor community, you know, we all mourn together, but we also celebrate an amazing life lived by the great Karen Lewis. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The chair recognizes Alderman Talia Pharoah.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution and to the family and the loved ones of Karen Lewis, to her CTU family and to the many students and teachers that she's touched in her decades of passion for the growth of our Chicago public school. I give my sincere condolences to you and I offer my prayers up for your strength as well. I remember in 2014 when I decided to run for Alderman, Karen Lewis had already become a powerful figure in the city of Chicago. And I was called in for the endorsement interview with CTU. I don't know whether I was more nervous about meeting Karen Lewis or the interview itself, but I was excited about the opportunity to meet her. I was excited about the opportunity to be in a position to even learn from her just a little bit about her passion for more equitable school system. I want to thank you for this opportunity for all of us and my colleagues to be able to honor her on this day. This short session would not be enough to honor her decades and her life, one that was filled with passion for others, putting emphasis on others more so than she did for herself. And even to the end, she fought and thought passionately about this city, the teachers and the students of this city. So I thank you, Madam President, for this opportunity to speak on her behalf, I believe. And I thank all of my colleagues for the kind words that are being said about this wonderful person. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you, President. I too raise my voice in support of this resolution honoring Karen Lewis. You know, she was many things to different people. You know, she and my late sister-in-law, also named Karen, they were called the Karens, grew up like sisters, so she was family. I was also a chemistry teacher, so I identified with her on many levels. And as I entered public service, she graciously sat down with me as I sought her counsel. So she will be missed, you know, for her fearless, strategic, and powerful leadership. She's definitely left really an indelible mark, not only on this city, but in education throughout this country. So my condolences to her husband, Coach, and her extended family and friends. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman King. The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. I also rise to support this resolution and my condolences to the Lewis family, to the Teachers Union, and all of her family and friends. Karen Lewis, I've always seen her from afar, but I had the opportunity to actually be at the table with her on something that she wanted. She would agitate, advocate, and then negotiate. I was blessed to be a part of the negotiation. And I have to tell you, I got the short end of the stick on the negotiation because Karen advocated, agitated, and negotiated with me to get what she wanted. And I think she planted some seeds in the Teachers Union that took them to another level on how they organize and how they advocate here in the city of Chicago. She was a voice that's going to be remembered in our history for time to come. Again, my condolences to the family. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I also rise in support of this resolution. I would mostly like to say that I am incredibly grateful that I got to be in this city at the same time as Karen Lewis. I am grateful for the legacy that she has left of incredible labor leaders that are charting a new path for, for labor fights, for bargaining for the common good, for creating cities for the many. Karen Lewis was and is what is going to always be an inspiration for me, a symbol of strength, a symbol of solidarity. And I am eternally grateful for, for being able to, to have witnessed her fight. Rest in peace, Karen.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sixto Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And also a rise in support of this resolution. And my condolences to all the family, to the CTU and everyone who had the honor and privilege to work very closely with Karen. As a former teacher and someone who had the opportunity to see very closely the rise of Core before now becomes the leadership of the Chicago Teachers Union as a member of the Teachers for Social Justice. I saw the incredible, incredible courage that Karen had in the midst of fear. Even when things looked dim and tough, Karen always stood in the right side. It is through her courage and leadership that she challenged powerful mayors, that she challenged the status quo to fight for the schools that our children deserve. Karen not only talked about equity, he acted towards equity. Karen is an example. And it was such a great honor and privilege to work hand in hand to fight for this issue of inequality, structural racism, and the many issues that will continue to strike in the city today. Karen's legacy is one of action. Oftentimes we talk about equity and many empty words and lip service to our communities. Karen actually meant it. Karen loved our city. I had the honor to see how powerful not only her words were, but her actions, embracing people across the city. Karen loved every corner of our city, Black and Brown and Asian and Native American, all of us. It was extremely, extremely, such a learning experience to see her grow and her courageous fight. I just want to share one experience because it's extremely timely and relevant. Back in 2014, in Pilsen, we were fighting a fight that nobody wanted to touch. So many interests actually involved a metal shredder right in front of Benito Paris High. It was actually Karen Lewis who stood up with us when others turned a blind eye. Karen Lewis exemplified courage. And she's obviously someone who spoke of justice every single time. When there were hunger strikes or any fight for justice, Karen was there. Let's honor her legacy of action with legislation. For us to honor such a powerful legacy, Karen Lewis gave so much to the city of Chicago. It is such a great loss. And we can only honor her legacy with actions and legislation, like the letter representative school that she fought courageously for so long, like environmental justice, where she always was there. And for every action that she took, she always had justice in mind. Her courage is a living legacy of what is possible in her city. That is the courage and examples that we saw in the most difficult times in our city. This is the time for action. That's the legacy of Karen Lewis, someone who walked the walk and she walked it with us. We'll miss you, dear friend. We'll miss you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. In the words of our illustrious President, brothers and sisters, I am just so honored as we celebrate Black History Month that we also celebrate and remember President Karen Lewis. So many people have said so much. I won't even try because I believe a person or know a person like Karen Lewis, as we would say in the Black church, she's preaching her, her life preached her own homegoing. Anything we say, yeah, it's, it's added on, but she lived the life that is already preaching and teaching itself. And so I want to just thank her for leaving behind because when someone passes on, their living is in vain if they have not touched someone's life that can carry on. And President Lewis, she touched so many lives. She gave us people like Brandon Johnson, people like Stacey Davis Gayes, people like Erica Bland. And for that, her living will not be in vain. And for so, I'm just happy, Madam President, that you took the time to recognize her and put this together, knowing all of her hard work that she has done, not only for this city, but this entire country. There are people across this country that looked at what Karen Lewis has done and patterned themselves after that. And so I thank her for just giving us a voice to fight with, a fearless voice. And I just want to give my condolences to her family, the entire Lewis family, and to the entire CTU family. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspata.
Thank you, Chairman. I regret that unlike some of my colleagues, I never had an opportunity to meet Ms. Lewis in person. I was always one or two degrees disconnected. But I know her from her words, from her reputation. I know her from the light that she shone over this city and the long shadow she casts for us now. And I think the only way our honor could be a disservice if she turns into another one of the sanitized saints that we have in this country and in this city. Ms. Lewis did not stand in generalization. She stood for specifics. And for me, looking back over some of her words, some of the positions that she took, they make me uncomfortable. As anyone who holds power in a city like Chicago should probably be made at least a tad uncomfortable by Ms. Lewis's positions, the way she stood, the way she fought. And so if, if there's an honor that I bring to her outside of this reading of this resolution, it's going to be letting her be my conscience in the votes that I take, in the way that I fight for and with this city, to hopefully try to find a way to understand how Karen would hope for me to act, how she would hope for me to use the power of my office. And so beyond this resolution, I hope that that is the tribute that I'm able to offer to her. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Laspata. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardona.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. In life, we experience loss. The loss we experience can have enduring impact on the lives of many. The legacy left behind can leave a rippling effect for the years to come. The loss of Karen Lewis has impacted the lives of family, friends, former coworkers, and leaders throughout the city. The lives she has touched are innumerable and her memory will not soon be forgotten. We can list her accomplishments and achievements she has had throughout her career in public education and as president of the Chicago Teachers Union. But I'm sure her life was filled with much more than that. Those who knew her loved her and she was committed to anything she sets her sights on. We will all miss her. Her family is in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Cardona. The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I'd like to express my condolences to Karen Lewis's family and to just recognize her efforts on behalf of the thousands of teachers across our great city. She was a strong advocate. She was fierce in the boardroom, but she was always fair. I was lucky enough to share a couple of experiences with her and I'll miss her. And her legacy will live on. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman O'Shea. The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. I also rise to support this resolution. I had the pleasure of meeting Karen Lewis many times, especially the time when she considered running for mayor. She had a lot of fire. She was faithful to everything that she's done, that she did, and she explained why. I wish to send my condolences to her family and her CTU family. She left a legacy and she will be remembered. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. I too support this resolution. Karen was one heck of a lady. I appreciate her friendship. She was a supporter of mine, but I was a huge admirer of hers. Everything she stood for, she was just an unbelievable person. As a proud and active union member for 43 years, I certainly admire people in the labor movement and she certainly was at the top of the heap. So to her family, her immediate family, her extended family, God bless everybody. And Karen was just, just, just an unbelievable person. So to call her a firecracker would be, wouldn't be enough to say she was more of a stick to dynamite. So she was hugely, unbelievably a true labor leader. So with that, thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President. I also rise to be associated with this resolution and express my condolences to Coach Lewis and the family, as well as the many people that... For me, you know, I got a chance to meet her a couple of times. I wasn't in public service up until recently. But I think about my experience as someone who grew up in CPS and going through four different schools due to being displaced and really what the state of schools were like prior to her influence. And I feel some regret that there wasn't a Karen Lewis in the time that I was coming up, fighting as hard as she has done and had done for so many. It isn't so much only a fight for the teachers, but also for the kids in the spirit of our city. And to think about the amount of heart and the amount of strength and courage it takes to speak truth to power and to fight. We're a much better city because of that. I think about the leaders she's inspired now and the changes. And I know that there are lives that have been saved even now in this time of COVID because of the amount of strength and what she helped build at the Chicago Teachers Union. So I'm very thankful for the, the strength and the progressive force that we have here in Chicago. Thanks to her influence, I think our city is, will suffer an immeasurable loss. And I look forward to celebrating her life and really living in a way that speaks to what she's brought to us. So thank you so much. And thank you to the family and everyone else for just allowing her to spend the time to fight for all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hairston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of City Council, I too rise in, in support of this resolution. Karen was a dear friend of mine for more than 35 years. And, and, and she would be pleased right now at all the accolades that are being bestowed upon her. But I think one of the things that is most, that stands out most for me about Karen is that she was a fighter, a real fighter. Not just on the front lines, not just for the kids, for the people, but she was also a fighter in terms of her life and her illness. You know, the last time I spoke to her, which was a couple of months ago, and I called her and just talking some generality and she said, girl, look, I can't go nowhere, I'm here, so tell me what's really going on? And, you know, that's just how she was. She kept it real. And no matter what, I'm sure you all can imagine that asking her advice on certain things, and this predates my time here in the council, how she would tell you how she really felt about something. And she always kept it real. You always knew where she stood and she was that way until the very end. And I remember after she became president of the CTU, she called me and she said, what do I need to do? And I said, well, girl, and then we had the conversation. And then it happened with the Teachers Union and Karen was not going to back down. She was not going to back down. And I remember that Halloween during her fight before her diagnosis, Karen made it into my city council Halloween costume. And I showed up that year as Karen Lewis as the CTU, fighting for the people. She will truly, I will truly miss her. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Hairston. The Chair recognizes Alderman Pat Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to be associated with this resolution. I met Karen a few times and was challenged by her a few times. I will say that that smile of hers, that warm smile of hers could draw you in. And then you would find out she was straight with no, a straight shooter, no chaser, straight no chaser. She spoke what was on her mind. I, I think Alderman Hairston captured that eloquently, so I won't go into more detail. But when I think of Karen, I think of her as being dynamic, fearless, and inspirational. And all has been said positive about her today. And I just want to, on behalf of the people that I represent in the 3rd Ward, to say thank you to her family for sharing her with us. Thank you for all the time that she put in trying to uplift our schools. My condolences to her family, to her friends and to the CTU and all the individual teachers that she inspired out there in Chicago. She will sorely be missed. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Dow. The Chair recognizes Alderman Jason Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the council. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. I met Karen in a very unusual set of circumstances while I was Alderman. And one thing that I will say about her, as everyone else has said, you, you knew where she stood. She was one of those individuals that went beyond her, what we would look at as a traditional role of a labor leader and really sought to help the kids and help the people, not just in her union, but the people of the city of Chicago. And I think for that, we're all eternally grateful. So again, this was a great woman. And as we celebrate Black History Month and as we celebrate this great Black woman from the city of Chicago, we are, as a council, blessed to have had her in our presence, blessed to have had her as a Chicagoan and blessed that she was here with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I too like to be associated with this resolution. Offer my condolences on behalf of myself, my family in the 37th Ward. I can't say I had a good pleasure from the beginning in working with Karen because I really didn't know her. But I learned of her during one of the elections. I happened to be on the other side. I was challenged. And at that time, as we celebrate Black History, I didn't come from a union family. And since during my term, I didn't know unions being a sharecropper of family and coming from a different background. But my constituent in my ward who... But my constituent in my ward, who is senior on this road, Berta Wilson, closely associated with Ms. Lewis, would always speak of Ms. Lewis, Karen, and CTU. So I learned to respect, learning from Ms. Wilson, knowing that, what I want to say is what she's done for me, even having known her and letting the family know of her legacy and her work, that I learned to get closer and work in more, even being challenged by CTU. It didn't stop me from serving our constituents. You can disagree, and we can come together and work together for the common good of all our children. I've learned now to even call Stacy and working with them when we have issues, and let's talk, and see how we can get through some things. So she left that embedded in me to continue to work in spite of, because of the work that she's done and the legacy she's left behind with CTU that no one could ever take it from her, and just to stand and continue to work on behalf of the children here in this great city of Chicago. So my condolences to the family. But know that she was a trailblazer and that she have left a legacy that we all can look to. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Mitz. The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to echo the comments of my colleagues and extend my deepest condolences to the Lewis family. I want to thank you for sharing Karen with all of us. Karen was a fearless, dedicated, and a dynamic leader who really lifted up and supported our teachers. And that work also helps support the schoolchildren of Chicago Public Schools. Her work and her legacy has made our school system a better place for our kids to grow and educate. And that's a lasting legacy that will go on forever. So again, my thoughts and prayers are with the family and a life well lived. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. And I want to send my sincere condolences to the Lewis family. As a fellow Chicago Public School teacher and someone who has served in primarily underserved communities, as Karen Lewis did, I am eternally grateful for the foundation she laid for many of us in the field of education. Ms. Lewis, Chicago salutes you, and your efforts shall be remembered and honored for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gardner. The Chair recognizes Alderman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I did not have the honor of serving as Alderman when President Lewis reigned. But I just want to thank her family, to Coach Lewis and our children. Thank you for sharing this great woman with our city. As a child of a servant, I know what it's like when parents make the sacrifice to serve our city or, you know, in whatever capacity. So thank you. And her legacy will continue to live on with strong leaders like Alderman Moore mentioned, Stacey Davis Gates, and just the advocacy and being champions for our children and that quality education. So thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. Our final Aldermanic speaker for this resolution is the great Susan Sodlaske Garza, who was inspired to service by Karen Lewis. Take it away, Alderman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I want to say, John, I see you here. You have my heart. You know that. Does it unite us? Does it build our power? Does it make us stronger? Those were three phrases that Karen lived by, and every decision she made came from those three phrases. Those words hang in my office to this day. Sorry. When Karen Lewis passed away, I lost a friend and a mentor, and the world lost an icon. Karen was a force to be reckoned with, a fierce leader who left her mark on the labor movement, the Chicago Teachers Union, and in the entire city of Chicago. She was an inspiration with a heart of gold. Karen taught me so much during our time together. She had a wicked sense of humor, and she always kept her word. Karen is the reason that I ran for Alderwoman. Despite my reservations, she believed in me when others thought it was impossible. She said, "Garza, you're already the mayor of the 10th Ward. The first vote you gotta get is Rawls, and the rest will be a piece of cake." When I won, and when I found out that I won, she called me and she said, "People are gonna try to change the way you talk, the way you walk, the way you eat, the way you dress. Stay true to yourself, because that's what got you elected." And you know what? That was her. She stayed true to herself. What you saw was what you got, and she was proud of who she was. Being a part of CTU leadership were the best days of my life. Karen and John would open their home every other Sunday for us to meet and to strategize. There was always good conversation, great food, and lots of laughter. John would poke his head in and say, "What's going on? You all been meeting for almost six hours already. Wrap it up." And then he'd grab a plate and go back to his room. We always had a laugh. We were a family. We were a true family, and we always had each other's back. John, Karen loved you fiercely. And I know that you loved her right back the same way. She hit the jackpot when she found you. I love you, brother. Rest in power, my CTU sister and dear friend. You will always be in my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Garza, for those powerful words. I also stand with the entire body of this council to speak to this resolution. Karen Lewis was clearly a great leader, a friend and a mentor to so many people, both here in Chicago and beyond. And as a longtime South Sider, Karen grew into a fierce advocate who was never afraid, never afraid, to speak her mind, to speak upon issues impacting our most underserved communities. Friends have noted that Karen was determined to leave a lasting impact wherever she went and to serve as a role model for all those who would come after her. And indeed, that is a key part of her legacy. She made her mark, whether it be at Dartmouth College, where she became the only black woman in the graduating class of 1974, or at some of our top high schools, including Lane Tech, Sullivan, and King College Prep, where she was a beloved chemistry teacher, or at the Chicago Teachers Union, where she served as one of the most outspoken, charismatic, and legendary and transformative leaders in the union's history. The legacy that Karen leaves behind is one that will continue to inspire people from near and far to keep fighting for what they believe in and to use power of collective action to demand righteous change. I remain grateful to have had the opportunity to have met her, have a gracious conversation, and witnessed her fighting spirit firsthand shortly after I was elected as mayor in 2019. It's Karen's tireless work that our city, it's because of Karen's tireless work that our city has truly become a better place. I want to extend, again, my deepest condolences to Karen's husband, John Lewis, who is with us today, known and loved by many as coach and as her number one supporter. Mr. Lewis, as you have heard during this tribute and others that have flowed in since the news of Karen's passing became public, it goes without saying that your wife was truly revered. We offer you our sincere condolences to you and your family and to all who knew her and loved her and felt touched by her incredible spirit. May she rest in power. Alderman Mitchell, I neglected at the beginning of these resolutions to seek a motion. Will you offer that now?
Yes, Madam President. I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of the three resolutions you mentioned earlier.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Mr. Lewis, Godspeed. We wish you and your family the best. And if I may, ask the body for a moment of silence in recognition of Karen Lewis's life and her legacy. Thank you, everyone. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, and it's fitting that we flow into this one next, is a resolution in honor of Black History Month. Again, all those who wish to speak, please signify by raising your hand in the chat box. And I believe we will be led initially by Alderwoman, Alderman Jason Irvin, who is Chair of the City Council's Black Caucus.
Thank you.
Alderman Irvin.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Again, February traditionally has been the month that we recognize the achievement of African Americans throughout our country. Let's not forget that Black history is American history. It is through the struggles and pains that our ancestors toiled to create what we know today as America. So let's not forget the hard work, the true work that was done to create this democracy, that was done to create what we all know and believe and where we are today. One thing that I always thought about Black History Month and is why is it the coldest and shortest month of the year being February? Again, there's a lot of contributions that we can talk about in this year, especially now that we have our first, not only female, but our first African-American female Vice President in Kamala Harris, as well as you, Mayor, our first African-American female mayor here in the city of Chicago. So again, Black history is American history. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Chairman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to be associated with this resolution. I'm very grateful that we have an opportunity to recognize Black history. And as I stated earlier, by me being from the South, having to experience from the have-nots to where I am today, I understand a lot regarding blacks. But during that time when we grew up, we were hard workers. We were ambitious. We were trying to get an education, even though we had to walk miles and miles in the mud to get to a road just to catch a truck, to get on the back of the truck to be carried to a store where we rode the bus to school. I'm grateful for my parents, who made us get this education. I didn't understand why we had to stay out of school to go to the fields and work during the day, because that's what our parents told us to do. They said, "If you don't work, you can't eat." I took that to heart, worked my tail off, which is still, as a black person, hard work will conquer success. And I continue to work hard each and every day. I look at my community today as being black. I like to see families show more love, neighbors helping one another, being that support system, the church encouraging, reaching out, bringing resources. Everyone doing what they need to do to try to help, particularly in a time that we're in now. As a black person, and you know, we've been called many names. And let me just tell you where we started from. We were, there were N-word. We went from there to another N-word with the O on it. We went from there and went on to being black. And then we're African-Americans. Now you tell me who we are. We are a human being that has the same heart as everyone else. If you cut us, we'll bleed the same. We should be treated the same. And we are who we are, and we are proud. I like Jane Brown. I remember back, "Say it loud, I'm black and I'm proud." And I'm today, "Say it loud, I'm black and I'm proud." Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderwoman Mitz. "Say it loud." The Chair recognizes Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand to support this resolution. And I'm gonna read to black. "They take my kindness for weakness. They take my silence for speechless. They consider my uniqueness strange. They call my language slang. They see my confidence as conceit. They see my mistakes as defeat. They consider my success accidental. They minimize my intelligence to potential. My questions mean I am unaware. My advancement is somehow unfair. To voice concern is discontental, I'm sorry, discontentment. If I stand up for myself, I am too defensive. If I don't trust them, I am too apprehensive. I am defiant if I am separate. I am fake if I emulate. My character is constantly under attack. Pride for my race makes me too black. Kenneth P. Philadelphia." Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Taylor. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. I also like to rise in support of this resolution. Proud to be African-American. One of the unique things about this period of time, I had a pleasure and an honor of being able to speak to a lot of young African-American kids in schools. And each and every time I speak to them, I try and make them aware of the fact that, you know, those of us who are here, who have made it over the waters, our survivors. And I remind them of the fact that, you know, a lot of folks who were either traded, or sold, or stolen from Africa, got on those ships, and on those ships, they had to sit down there in terrible conditions. Some folks died. Some folks didn't make it. But all of us that are here, we are the survivors. We are the strongest of the strongest of our people who came from Africa. And it's no wonder why we have so much resilience in our lives, why we overcome so many things, so much discrimination, so much unfairness. And not just here in America, but people of color all over this world have to climb and continue to fight and continue to have to have days like this to recognize that we are still not getting our fair share. But I celebrate this day for where we have come as African-Americans, but I also celebrate this day of where we still have to go. We still have to continue to fight. We still have to continue to advocate for fairness and justice for our people and for the ones that are coming after us, because it's like we take one foot forward... Because it's like we take one foot forward and we get two feet back. One step forward and two feet back and we gotta keep pushing forward for our people in order to be fair. There's no way in the world that I still should go into meetings and I'm the only African American in the meeting. Whether it's a union meeting, whether it's a corporation meeting, whatever the meeting is, it's still a shame that I have to be the only African American only because I'm an Alderman and I'm an elected official. So we still have to push forward and still have to work on a consciousness of people to be conscious of the fact that things still aren't fair. It's not right and it shouldn't be that way. So I support this resolution. I'm proud to be an African American man. And you know, as we continue to be able to look into our ancestries with all of these new products out now, you know, we all begin to know more and more where we come from. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Pharoah.
Thank you, Madam President. And I too rise in support of this resolution. I think my colleagues before me have said it very clearly and I echo their words. But something that Alderman Chairman Mitz said really stands out to me. She talked about the road that she walked just to get to school. And that made me think about the roads that we currently walk today. Some of them very smooth. That's because our ancestors and those that are before us that have gone before us have walked those same paths, have walked those same roads to make them smooth for us. I think most of the time we wake up even as parents, we want to make life a lot easier for our children in the world that we live in. So we walk those difficult paths for them. We walk those paths that are full of bumps and obstacles just for our children. And we know that we're going to get to a point where we can no longer walk for them and they're going to have to take up the helm. And so I honor today the generation that's behind us and encourage them to walk those bumpy roads so that they can make their path or the path of the future a lot easier. I want to honor today not only those that have gone before us and the leaders of our future, but also want to honor in specific Oscar DePree's, who was a civil rights advocate. He was the first black Alderman in the city of Chicago, having served from 1915 to 1917 in the Second Ward and then re-elected in 1943 through 1947 in the Third Ward. He was the first African American elected to the Congress in the 20th century, having served three terms. But interestingly, he was the only African American serving in Congress during his term. He was also a Cook County Commissioner from 1914 to 1914 to, I believe, 1918. Very interestingly about Oscar DePree's, he built wealth here in the city of Chicago, but he didn't keep that wealth to himself. He spent much of his money helping blacks move into homes that were traditionally in neighborhoods that were traditionally white neighborhoods. So I honor him today. He's honored in the 29th Ward with the Oscar DePree's Elementary School. And I honor him before the City Council today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Talia Pharoah. The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to be associated with this resolution. You know, as a black man in this country today and having children that are African American, it gives me great pleasure to be able to serve among my colleagues. You know, folks that we stand on the shoulders like Emma Mitz and talk about all the things that she had to do. Our Chairman Carrie Austin and, you know, all of the trials and tribulations she's been through. And so I want to honor my colleagues for the great work that they do on behalf of our communities, our communities that are of African American descent. And I also want to take this time to to honor educator Manfred Byrd, who passed last year. Being the Chair of the Education Committee, I think it is important to bring light to his contributions in the educational system. Education, I mean, I'm sorry, educator Manfred Byrd was born May 29th, 28, I'm sorry, 1928 in Alabama. He studied mathematics at Iowa Central and then he later graduated earning a master's degree from Atlanta University. He also got his PhD from Northwestern University in 1978. He began his educational teaching in Quincy, Illinois. He then came and worked for the Chicago Public School System. He did everything in the Chicago Public School System. He was a teacher, an assistant principal of an elementary and a high school. And he was an Assistant General Superintendent of the Chicago Public Schools. He was also appointed Deputy Superintendent of the Chicago Public Schools in 1968 at the age of 39, which is a relatively young age. He spent the next 17 years being passed over even though he was really prepared for the job of General Superintendent, mainly because of the color of his skin. In 1985, Harold Washington appointed him General Superintendent of the Schools, the position we now call CEO. He was the first African American to hold this position until he retired into 1980. He paved the way for such people like Janice Jackson and all of the other leaders of color who have run the Chicago Public School System. Byrd is the recipient of over 100 awards and commendations for his excellence in teaching and academic administration and holds several honorary doctorate degrees. Again, Mr. Byrd passed away on January 17th and this was brought to light by my colleague Walter Burnett. And so I appreciate that and just wanted to honor him and all his contributions to our educational system here in the city of Chicago. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hadden.
Thank you, Madam President. And to my colleagues, I too rise in support of this resolution. And reflecting on some of the comments of my colleagues and also just the state that we're in in the city, I want to use my time today in thinking about how we honor Black History Month to talk about black futures. In this position in City Council, we all have the responsibility and the privilege to make the changes that we believe are necessary for the residents of Chicago. As we think about, reflect on the challenges, the discrimination, the racism that black people have been subject to throughout the decades and the centuries in this country and in this city, let us not forget that right now, every day, we also have black people in the city still, still subject to racism, subject to racism in structural forms, whether it be in how we allocate funds for our city budget or the types of policies that we choose to pass or not pass. And let's remember that as we celebrate black history, we owe it to our children, we owe it to our residents to make way for black futures. And I ask my colleagues to live this spirit every month, every week for the rest of the year. We've seen through the COVID-19 pandemic how unaddressed structural racism, environmental racism, just compounds problems when we have crises. We're seeing black residents die at high rates, get infected at high rates, and we're having so many issues in bringing equitable solutions to our city. That's because that we have not addressed inequity and racial injustice adequately enough for decades. Let's be the City Council in this four-year term that makes a difference, that takes bold action, that changes the trajectory of what black residents in Chicago experience. That's my hope for our council and for our city. And thank you, Madam President, for the time.
Thank you, Alderwoman Hadden. The Chair recognizes Alderman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. And I stand in support of this resolution as well. I know it's an important time to celebrate where we ask our families to honor the history and achievement of black Americans and reflect on their struggles and achievements like those of Karen Lewis, who's storied live, we celebrate today. We have to be active partners pushing for the legislative and social changes that will lift our city up and all the residents together. And I think that we've started this in this council, in the committees and with you to do that. But we have a long way to go. I still think we're at a crossroads both, you know, locally, nationally. We have a lot of change with the new president, a new direction in our country that I hope uplifts all of us and helps us go in the right direction as one. But I appreciate working more than ever with you, Mayor, and the work that you've tried to take on with my colleagues in making those significant governmental changes here in Chicago that can help our city be that leading city in creating the fairness and the equity and the equality that we need to see in our country. And I continue to appreciate everything that my colleagues talk to me about, that they bring to me as a chairman, but just as a friend and a colleague to make sure that we are moving in the right direction together, that we are learning from one another and that we can lift up ourselves, our residents, but especially future generations in the city who need us the most. So I thank you for all your work, your ideas, my colleagues and all their determination in fighting for the justice and equity in the city that we need. And I stand in strong support of this resolution today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Wagasback. The Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. I definitely stand in support of this resolution. And as we think about our institutions and different people, the black church stands out the most from me as our voice for our community. And so today I want to remember people like Reverend Louis Body, Reverend Clarence Cobb, and of course, leaders like Reverend Clay Evans and Bishop Brazier. These are men who not only stood strong for the voices in our church, but they were holistic in helping building our communities and helping establish our civic, many of our civic leaders. And so I want to just recognize them during this time of black history. And then I keep, as I remind people, as people constantly hear me say, and as I constantly heard people even talking about during the session where we had our speakers regarding the resolution, the Indian Resolution, everybody always refer back to the black experience. And that's because the black experience is Americans' experience. And I would tell people, no matter what color you are, look at what you're doing and be intentional about including black people. I tell people every day, when black people win, everybody wins. And that's how our city, our state, our county and our country become better. They say, why do you say that, Alderman? And I tell you, give a person that's a black that don't have a job or a person that's black that don't have a contract, give them a contract and watch they hire not only other blacks, but they hire other ethnicities, other sexes, everything. But that doesn't happen all the time with other ethnicities, as many of us seen over the years. So I encourage and I implore how you, we may leave this day, we may leave this month, but don't let it leave you as an individual to have an impact going forward as you help someone black along the way and help someone grow. And I think about that as we deal with our cannabis today. Who are you helping along the way and leading so that people can help grow, help become millionaires, help become self-sustaining so that we can help our city, our state and our country as a whole? And again, finally, I can't go without saying, as we celebrate those behind us who came before us so that they laid the path, definitely a big shout out to our first African American female mayor, Mayor Lori Lightfoot. That is no feat to be sneezed at. That's huge, it's major and it's living. It's a living person, it's a living example. But, and yes, we have those that came before us that paved the way and we thank them for that. So thank you so much, Madam President, for this opportunity.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And it's quite fitting that I go after my friend Alderman David Moore, whose comments I certainly echo. You know, I believe that we do not live in a society where there are zero net sum gains. I believe the success and the advancement of the black community also supports the success and advancement of all communities, including my community, the Latino community. So I rise to support this resolution, honor Black History Month in order to recognize the immense contributions of African Americans throughout this country's history, throughout our city's history. You know, I'm very proud to represent several areas of the city that are historically black. And I think that that is important, that we understand that all of us, regardless of who we represent, we represent a cosmopolitan city, a city that should be united. I believe that my organization was founded in the early 80s as the first majority Latino group that supported our first black mayor and Harold Washington. And I'm proud to be of those roots. And I pray and I hope that I continue to live out that vision of a unified working class people who are fighting for better quality of life, for working class folks, particularly across and via unifying efforts. But today I certainly rise to support and recognize the immense contributions of the African American community to our city and nation. And thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise proudly in support and I'm honored to be able to be in support of this resolution and in support of our black siblings. Thinking about the history of this country and the African descendants of slavery reminds me of the honor of being appointed as the Vice Chair of the Reparations Subcommittee and thinking about not just the achievements, but really the struggle that black folk have endured and continue to endure. When I think about, you know, our city, our city is a cosmopolitan city, but it's also a very black city. The soul and the beauty that we have comes from folks like John Baptiste DuSable, Ida B. Wells, Fred Hampton, Harold Washington, Barack Obama, Karen Lewis. So many people that have brought so much in spite of how this city has oppressed them. When we think about redlining in the city, when we think about a racist police institution that still has yet to be held accountable, those are things that I join Alderwoman Hadden in really thinking about what our place is to make sure that future generations can continue to make black history by not just, you know, speaking in platitudes, but being able to make the votes and the decisions that change the trajectory. When we talk about police accountability, when we talk about affordable housing and ending the segregation here in this town, it is because we understand the history of oppression that has occurred to our black siblings here. But we do see the great achievements by so many and the endurance and strength and resolve and passion that many have brought here to our city. And so it is an absolute honor for me to be a part of this council with many of our colleagues here with the opportunity to change the trajectory of the city by making decisions that we all need. So it is an honor and I thank you very much for the opportunities to rise in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo, I too rise in support of this resolution. And I want to kind of echo off of Alderman Moore, again, my neighbor in the 17th Ward, and just recognize some of the great, we call them giants in the church. Some of you all, Mayor, may not know, but I am very much so deeply rooted in the church. Both my parents are pastors. And it all started with the general himself, the godfather, Reverend Clay Evans, my godfather Archbishop Lucius Hall, Reverend Mason Woods, Bishop William Ellis, Bishop E. Set You Free, Bishop James W. Campbell, Bishop Charles Davis, and most recently Pastor Darrell Jackson. The last two are both of the Third Ward. And I want to honor my father, Alderwoman Mitz. My father migrated from Parkdale, Arkansas, and he picked cotton and he did not My father migrated from Parkdale, Arkansas, and he picked cotton, and he did not get off on the West Side train. He went to the Inglewood train, that's where we let off. And I have been in the Sixteenth Ward on that train ever since, and I'm so honored that I have a father who, with a sixth-grade education, who believed that a man that don't work, don't eat. And he built, literally with his own hands and with the impeccable work ethic, and here he is, the father of the youngest Black Alderman ever elected. So if my dad is listening or watching, Daddy, thank you for just being a hard-working and being my history. And to all of the great men and pastors and leaders that we have lost, I honor the great leaders of this, of our church community in Chicago. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cicero Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to raise in support and solidarity of this resolution. I won't repeat, I know my colleagues already have expressed a lot of the reasons why this resolution is so important. I hope, my only hope is that this time next year, in February next year, we can talk, as some of my colleagues have mentioned, about curriculum in our Chicago public schools that reflect the real history and contribution of Black communities in the city and across the country. We also want to make sure that we continue, hopefully we can make significant progress and tangible progress on the issue of reparations that Alderman Sawyer has led, among other very important initiatives in the council. So again, let's honor this resolution with action and legislation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Kapelman.
Thank you. I too stand in support of this resolution. I was a freshman in high school in 1967 when schools in my Texas hometown integrated. We had two high schools in my community, George Washington Carver and Robert E. Lee. George Washington Carver became a grade school and had to change its name because it was now enrolling white people, whereas African-American students went to Robert E. Lee High School, and that name had to stay because after all, it was tradition. Many of us students created a club called the Human Race Club, and its purpose was to encourage students from all ethnic backgrounds to get to know one another. In 1970, our club organized to get rid of our school flag, which was the Confederate flag, and to say it was controversial 50 years ago is putting it lightly. Actually, I'm still working with some of my classmates now to change the name of Robert E. Lee High School. I'd like to call it Barbara Jordan High School, the first African-American member of Congress in the state of Texas, but that's still a ways to go there. But what's interesting to note is that every single white student who was a member of the Human Race Club had at one time lived outside the state of Texas, including me. What I realized is what changes hearts is being exposed to something different, to be exposed to a different setting where racism is not tolerated. This country continues to have a mark of shame when it endorsed the use of slavery. There is still so much to do to address institutional racism, but it's by getting to know one another, our values, and it's our commitment to respect those who are different from us, along with a commitment to push for reparations, that we can create real change. We all suffer when institutional racism continues in this country. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Kapelman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to rise in support of this resolution. I'll echo briefly the words of my colleague Alderman Jeanette Taylor with another Chicago poet, Gwendolyn Brooks, who I had the opportunity to see read this poem before she passed from us. In the poem "Truth," she says, "Sweet is it to sleep in the coolness of snug unawareness." And I recognize how much snug unawareness I have experienced in my own life. And I'm grateful for each one of my colleagues within the Black Caucus here, for friends like John White, Caitlin Johnson, Dr. Michael Washington, who have taken the time to rouse me from that unawareness, to shake me from the privilege and the systemic racism that I know that I have benefited from. And to the extent that I, as a white Chicagoan or a white Alderman, can stand in support of this resolution, I think it is with a spirit of confession and repentance of the systems that have unjustly benefited me, the systems that I have too often been complicit in, and with the repentance to walk with each of you in the tearing down of those systems toward a brighter, more equitable, more just Chicago. And so that is the spirit of my solidarity in standing with you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Laspada. The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Welcome to America, and thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this resolution, and really quick, I just want to say with all the things that's going on and all the things that our ancestors had to endure, I want to challenge every African-American under the sound of my voice to challenge these young folks to stop the Black-on-Black violence that's plaguing our communities. Thank you, Madam President. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. I too support this resolution. As usual, I like to use the sports analogy. So two of the greatest athletes up to 1950, Jesse Owens and Jackie Robinson, I can't imagine what they endured, but one thing about Jesse Owens that I found out very recently that really bothered me, when he won all those gold medals, we know what kind of a jerk Hitler was and ignored him. Sad thing was, FDR never, ever called him, congratulated him, or sent him a telegram or anything. So that's a terrible part of Black history that I just wanted to share with everybody. I don't know if people are aware of that, but once again, I just want to stand with my colleagues in honor of Black History Month. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ray Lopez.
Good morning, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution, being no stranger to the African-American community. I want to take a moment to recognize some of those leaders who are still with us and who led the path for us in my own ward, recognizing four of the most recent African-American Aldermen represented and held the seat that I have now, that I now occupy, starting with Alderman Marlene Carter, Virgil Jones, Ted Thomas, and of course, Tony Folks. But I also want to take a moment to recognize one of my residents. She's a fighter, and she's the embodiment of history that's come alive. In her early 80s, Gwen Johnson, from my West Inglewood community, has fought segregation, she's fought discrimination, she's fought for a better neighborhood, and just recently, she's fought COVID, and she's won. She's with us today, fighting for the children that are in my background, fighting to give them a chance, like so many of our grandparents, so many of our elders who are still fighting to preserve the Black family, the Black unit that makes up the fabric of Chicago. And those are also individuals worthy of our admiration, respect, and honor today. And I am thankful that I've been given the opportunity to meet, know, and love so many of them in their efforts. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. I think I'm going to quote my favorite politician, who was Shirley Chisholm, who says that you don't make progress by standing on the sidelines, whimpering and complaining, you make progress by implementing ideas. And I think that Black History Month recognizes our achievements as Black people and reveals how far we've come through struggle, but it also reveals how much more work is upon us. And I think today, what I want to do is uplift the community of Bronzeville, which I am so honored to represent, where much Black history has been made, to celebrate the life of Carter G. Woodson, who started Black History Month at the Wabash YMCA, and also to acknowledge four giants in our community who all passed during Black History Month. The Bishop Charles Davis from Indiana Pentecostal Church of God in Christ, Pastor Emeritus Darrell Jackson from Liberty Baptist Church where Martin Luther King spoke, Pastor Otis Anderson Jr. from Cathedral Missionary Baptist Church, and Bishop Charles Mason Ford of St. Paul Church of God in Christ. All of these men were men who made progress by implementing ideas and doing work in our community. And I guess today, I am asking that we all commit, some of us recommit, to making more progress for Black people, and all of us working together that we can move this city and this nation forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dow. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to express my support for this resolution. I also want to take a second to embrace the Blackness in our Latino community that so many times is swept aside and is denied and is rejected. We are Black as well, our community, our Puerto Rican community, for example, that in a lot of ways rejects, and there's so much internalized racism in our culture. I want to take a second to embrace that Blackness. I also want to express my love and solidarity for all the Black people in the United States feeling the exhaustion and the rage of living while being Black in this country, doing anything while being Black in this country. All my love and all my solidarity. And I want to echo the voice of my colleague Maria Haddon and so many other of my colleagues. I really hope that as lawmakers and people committed to transformation, we will be able to continue to fight for a more equitable, a more just, a more, a space where we can all be free, a space where Black people feel safe, a space where, a space where we can all thrive. And that starts with the liberation of Black people. Until that happens, none of us will be free. I'm very grateful for the contributions of all Black people that have come before. And I, I'm really thankful for all my colleagues and all the, and all the Black people that have contributed to make this city a better place for all. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Jim Gardner.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. As someone who was born and raised in a predominantly white neighborhood on the northwest side of Chicago where I still reside, I'm eternally grateful to the Black community and Black individuals who have embraced and welcomed me into their community time and time again, whether my involvement in athletics or as a park district and working in Inglewood, a teacher on the south side of Chicago, a firefighter in West Garfield Park, or now is an Alderman, the Black community has consistently extended their hands to me. I've been fortunate enough to have numerous mentors in my life, and I still have them to this day, people like Alderman Harris, Alderman Burnett, Alderman Beal, Alderman Sawyer, Brookins, Dow, Mitts, Austin, Curtis, Telly Pharaoh, and Alderman Scott. I want to sincerely thank you for your continued guidance and support and for always making me feel welcome to engage in conversation and debate that helps build bridges throughout our city. I am honored to work alongside each and every one of you and help create a brighter future for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gardner. The Chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you, Madam President. I also raise my voice in support of this resolution honoring Black history, although I will say I do look forward to and I'm hoping to see the day when these types of platitudes are not needed. You know, I was trying to think about what to say, and I was thinking about an interview that Dr. King had where the question was posed, you know, by a journalist on why Blacks haven't been able to pull themselves up by their boots, by their bootstraps, comparing us to immigrants. Dr. King eloquently stated, you know, that immigrants were not slaves, nor did free Blacks get any resources to get started. However, immigrants and peasants were given land and resources during the same time. This is the same thing I think about when I think about redlining that happened in this country, that happened very prominently right here in Chicago. African-Americans were not only treated inequitably, in fact, we were strategically discriminated against and cheated economically. I believe earnestly that God has put us on a serious timeout, as I'd like to say, to show us how, just how many ways the system does not recognize our dignity. As the events at the Capitol, you know, have revealed, we have an uphill battle that really is entrenched in the very fabric of our country. As harsh, you know, as this virus has been on this country, racism has been much more deadly, much more contagious, and unfortunately will outlive the virus. Inequity, you know, was very intentional and strategic in our country, and so true equity, I believe, will not happen organically, but we must, you know, all work strategically and intentionally to eradicate it, just as feverishly as it was put in place and still exists. So with, you know, so many Black leaders in position of power, along with our brown and white counterparts, it truly is incumbent on us to make sure that we push this struggle forward in a meaningful way, and if not, you know, shame on us. So we need to work feverishly to pass, you know, civilian oversight, to make sure that true cannabis equity is in place, to pass Angelique Young ordinance, to have true MBE and WB reform, and so much more. So for me, this is truly how we can honor Black history, if we actually roll up our sleeves and do the work to do so, so that we're not here 10 years from now honoring Black History Month. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman King. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I too joined this resolution. I wanted to speak on something that's in everyone's mind when it comes to education. I read an article by Amy Morona a couple of days ago that kind of caught my interest. And one of the places where African-Americans are lagging severely behind is higher education. And obviously starts in early childhood education, as we all know, and it's in the inner cities, where really, it's really compounded by a lot of the factors, social and economic. But just to give you some stats and where we can work together on, I think here or here in the city, University of Chicago, which has got a great campus, just University of Chicago, which has got a great campus just south of here in the city, only has 4.7% African Americans. Loyola University, which has got a beautiful campus right by the lake, only has 5.5% African Americans. UIC, which is really at the heart of the city, mind you, only has 7.7% on the undergraduate level of population. So how do we get to equity when these numbers are pretty sobering in getting African Americans to buy for those high-paying jobs where our economy is changing by the moment? And it isn't just here in Chicago. Cleveland, whose half population is Black, only 6% Blacks go to Wayne State University. And Detroit, 80%, where African Americans are the population, only sends 15% of their population to Detroit. And so, University of Detroit, I should say. So this is one area that I think we can work on. A lot of, a lot of, not just Black, but Brown people end up in for-profit universities, taking on debt, that they're not going to be able to pay. And it's not that the system is failing them. As one of my colleagues alluded to, the fact is that the system's shutting them out. It was designed to do that. The system is working flawlessly against African Americans because it's shutting them out of something so, so basic. And education changes lives. I know that it changed my life. And so I want to join my colleagues here in the council to do something about that at the city college level and then also working with Governor Pritzker at the state level to unlock access. University of Illinois, I think in the single digits as well, I was just kind of writing my numbers down, and it shouldn't be. This is, you know, 2021, and if we are to succeed here in the city, we need to bring along African Americans to higher education levels that are now, you know, comparable to whites. Four times higher whites are earning degrees than African Americans. Hispanics are doing a little bit better, but the ones that, the really, really troublesome is African Americans. And, you know, my colleagues talk about let's do something about it. I know that your agenda on education is pretty broad and comprehensive, but I think this is where, an area that we got to work on to be able to include African Americans and have them not to go for profits, for profit universities, because again, the whole system's game towards that. And so anyway, just wanted to say that I think that we need to work on that. We cannot be competitive. 2030 ought to be a year that we say, let's get to 20% of all colleges, universities for African Americans. We got to have a goal. We have to have a goal. I know we do this on a yearly basis, but we got to get something done here pretty, pretty soon. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Cardenas. Our last Aldermanic Speaker is Chairman Michelle Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. Today I rise to be associated with this. And turn off my phone, that might help me. So today I rise to be associated with this resolution. As we talk about Black history, there are so many wonderful leaders. And so I'm going to open up with Still I Rise. I'm not going to read all of it, but you may write me down in history with your bitter and twisted lies. You may trod me in the very dirt, but still, like dust, I rise. I rise today because I stand on the shoulders of African American men and women and leaders right here in my very own community, like John Stroger, who stood here and was the first African American man to be president of the county board. Today I stand on the shoulders of Judge Cousins, who was an appellate court Supreme Court Justice. I am so proud to have him be a part of my legacy and a shoulder that I stand on. Today I stand on Conrad World's shoulder, who mentored me and loved me after all my mentors were gone. Today I stand on the shoulders of Lorraine Dixon, who was the first female pro team, first female budget chair. Today, I am so proud to stand on the shoulders of former Alderman Keith Caldwell, who mentored me as a young person and kept me on a straight and narrow. So today Maya Angelo is, I'm reaming and I'm loving her today because she said, leaving behind the nights and the tear and fear, I rise into the daylight that's a wonderfully clear. I rise, bringing the gifts that my ancestors gave me. I'm the dream and the hope of that slave. I rise, I rise, I rise, and we all rise. Thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to have this time.
Thank you, Alderman Harris. I also stand with the entire body of this council to speak to this resolution. Many truths were spoken today, which I take and we should take as a call to action. Since its founding in 1915, Black History Month has provided us with an important opportunity to recognize and celebrate the many accomplishments and achievements of Black people throughout the history of this country. These contributions extend far beyond 1915 and have long-lasting impacts on our country over the entire 400-year span that we have been on this continent. This year's Black History Month theme, quote, "The Black Family: Representation, Identity, and Diversity," not only highlights just how deep-rooted and impactful these contributions are. And I encourage you to, if you have not been following our daily post about notable African Americans from Chicago, from our past and our present. But this also speaks to the awe-inspiring ability of Black people to come together as a family, whether chosen or not, and create generational change. This enduring sense of togetherness is foundational to the preservation of Black culture, identity, and diversity, especially during these times. It's also foundational to the social and economic fabric of this country and this city, and further proving, as Chairman Irvin said, that Black history is truly American history. And any effort to separate the two would be a great injustice to the Black people who built this country from the ground up, being forced into hard labor to give our lives in service. And it's our blood that built the wealth that others have endured at our expense. No more. So as we continue to observe Black History Month throughout the rest of this week, it is my hope and expectation that we will all find ways to pay homage to the Black people and Black families here in Chicago and across the country who have and continue to enrich our cultural, economic, and legal landscape, and also those in need, including our most vulnerable brothers and sisters, and of course, our children. The fight continues. Thanks to all of our ancestors, our grandparents, parents and siblings, and extended family. And in the words of the great poet James Weldon Johnson, "Lift every voice and sing, till earth and heaven ring, ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise, high as the listening skies, let it resound loud as a rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun, our new day begun, let us march on till victory is won." Thank you. Our last resolution honors the hard-working men and women across our infrastructure departments and others who proved their mettle during this last large snowstorm. With us today is Alderman, I'm sorry, Commissioner John Tully, Commissioner Lisa Morrison Butler, Commissioner Andrea Chang, Commissioner David Reynolds, Commissioner Gia Biagi, Director Rich Gaidus, First Deputy Commissioner Dwayne Hightower, Managing Deputy Commissioner Ray Loreno, and Deputy Commissioner Cole Stollard, representing Streets and Sand, DFSS, the Department of Water, AIS, CDOT, OMC. Ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to speak to this resolution, please raise your hand in the chat box. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Michelle Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I wish to be associated with this resolution. Today, I want to thank all our department heads. I mean, Chicago is known for its brutal winters, and I can tell you, this one was no different. It's coming in and came out with thunderous applause. When I say that, man, we got all that snow all at one time and cold weather to boot. It made it a very, very difficult couple of weeks. And so I want to say that all the departments have really stepped up. And I know people say, well, they get paid to do their jobs, but it's how they do the jobs. It's how they put in the effort, it's how hard they work, and the selfless things that they do. I specifically want to speak to Streets and Sands as I was out there with them and with the equipment, and I bumped into truck 10, 10-335, 100335, John Cruiser, Thomas Arrejo, and he's a laborer, because I had a lady who had been stuck in the alley for 24 hours. She waited for AAA, they never came. She called them a litany at times, but this crew stopped. They didn't have to stop, they could have just moved on to another alley, but they stopped, they got out, they dug her out, they pushed her out, and I'm grateful because that could have been my sister, my mother, my aunt. So I'm appreciative for all the acts of kindness that happened to so many people throughout the city, where the city and the city employees stepped up. So whether you did something real big, or whether you did something real small, or whether you did any kind of act of kindness to a citizen, I want to say today that we appreciate you and commend you for being out there and continuing to do your job, even in difficult times. So on behalf of the residents of the A4, we thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Harris. The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support of this resolution. I'd like to start by complimenting and thanking many city departments for their hard work during the past few weeks with the repeated snowstorms. But I'd also like to touch on something as someone who's not only served as Alderman for 10 years, but in working for my community for the past 25 years, I've experienced quite a few of these snowstorms, and what we experienced the last few weeks ranks somewhere near the top. And it just sheds a light on how critically important it is, as Alderman, that you have a tireless worker as your ward superintendent. Now, your ward superintendent is in charge of garbage removal, recycling, street sweeping, cleaning vacant lots. But the biggest thing is when you get storms like this in a neighborhood like mine, where I have 120 miles of residential streets, in addition to 20 miles of arterial streets, if those arterial streets aren't cleared, aren't remain clear, there'll be a crippling effect on the city. And for those of you that have been around, I remind you of 1979. But your ward superintendent needs to be out there, night and day, communicating with you. I know my ward soup has put the time in, but that's why they're in that position. They are your eyes and ears out there, and it's their job to make sure that your neighborhood streets are safe. So I would stress to anybody, all my colleagues on here, make sure that you have a strong ward superintendent, a tireless ward superintendent, and that you're communicating with them day and night, especially during snowstorms. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Shea. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and I also like to rise in support of this resolution. You know, my ward superintendent coincidentally happened to be on sick leave, and so I want to thank all of the people who filled in for her. Cole, Commissioner Tully, I mean, man, you're fantastic. You always come through for us. Kelly did a good job, Kyle, you know, all of those folks. And, you know, it's a funny thing, we have no idea how many other people was working on our snow in our community. Coincidentally, I live about a block away from one of the lots where they were loading and unloading the snow, and I got the opportunity to talk to one of the high lift drivers. And, you know, I was talking to the young man, and I was like, where you from? He's like, I'm from the water department, you know? It's like, so it was like every department was working on this snow. They went out of their way. They, I mean, living, living a block away from there, I had the opportunity to see them loading, unload snow all day and all night. They were working hard. So I commend everyone that's involved. I want to commend the Department of Family and Support of Services for working with all the homeless people that, you know, sleep in some of these lots and under the bad ox, making sure that they didn't freeze to death and had a safe place to go. So everyone just did a great job. Again, we have no idea how many, because all of the departments work together, we have no idea how many people was in the kitchen working on these things. I just want to say you guys did a great job, and thank God y'all got to the garbage after the snow melted and unfroze. We really appreciate it. I know a lot of us was calling you guys because we were getting the calls. I mean, you know, the Alderman, because we live in our community, we can't even walk out our house, right, without our neighbors knocking on our doors. And you guys really came through for us. I just want to say thank you all very much. Appreciate everything that you all done for our ward. Thank you all for backing Diamond up. I really appreciate all of you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The Chair recognizes Alderman Garza.
Hi, I just want to say, take a minute to say thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm not going to start naming names because I'll probably leave somebody off and then they'll, and it won't be intentional, but I want to say thank you for all the work that you guys do tirelessly, always checking up to make sure we have what we need. Thank you for a job well done. You guys are the true heroes of this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Garza. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hadden.
Thank you, Madam President. Just echoing all the love and support my colleagues are lifting up. Thank you so much to our department heads. A special thank to Streets and Sand and everyone who chipped in. We don't have necessarily as many miles of streets as some of my colleagues, but the, I would argue, maybe the snow by the lake, we just get more of it? Maybe that's just me. So really appreciate the 16-hour days, the extra efforts. Special thanks for the fantastic communication of our ward soup, Dan Murphy, and thanks to Deputy Hightower as well. You guys went above and beyond. I know you're already tired, everybody's working very hard, and I think this is an important, and Madam President, thank you for bringing this resolution forward, because I believe the residents in the city of Chicago really need to know about all the great work that our departments and Streets and Sand especially does for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Hadden. The Chair recognizes Alderman Tali Pharaoh.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution, and essentially just wanted to say thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Tully, Deputy Hightower, and your entire team. You guys did a fantastic job. I think the residents are very proud of the efforts that you put in with this, this most recent snow. It was not just a one-night snow that dropped, you know, 16, 17 inches. This, this is the snow that occurred over a couple of weeks that dropped over 34 to 36 inches, and you guys did a fantastic job throughout the city. But I particularly wanted to thank my ward soup as well, Ward Soup Dwayne worked for the incredible job that he did in the 29th ward. You know, even when we had nowhere else to put snow, Dwayne found vacant lots, got the consent of the owners of those lots, and was able to put snow on those lots. So thank you so much, Streets and Sand. You guys did a fantastic job, and we commend you on this day. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Tali Pharaoh. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in supporting the resolution, and I want to echo my ward superintendent is his first time dealing with the snow, but he had help because the commissioner and Tommy Johnson and Cole, Kyle Smith, Dwayne Hightower, all reached in to try to give him the help that we need. Kyle Smith, Dwayne Hightower, all reached in to try to give him the help that we need. The one thing that I need him to help with now is that we remove the dubs from off the streets and make sure that people no longer continue to hold a park. The problem that I'm having with that is there are healthcare workers who need to get to see the patients, and they have no place to park. So with the work that's been done, I'm grateful for it. I thank you all for one of the largest snowstorms that came upon us in such a hurry, but I'm still needing some help in making sure the side streets where residents have all the furniture is on the street is cleared up. And I commend you for the job that you've done, and all departments, all, everyone, even with the residents, let me just say, they stepped up to help seniors and different ones to clean, clean up and assist each other. So I'm grateful for the city of Chicago and everyone who participated with some kind kindness act that they done during the snowstorm. You have made everyone safe. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I thank everybody who was involved. But I just, I don't know if we're going to get an opportunity to send Commissioner Lisa Morrison Butler off. So I just want to really congratulate her for all the hard work she's done over the years. And a lot of people don't get recognized for seeing how many of our homeless, our seniors are taken care of, especially during these snowstorms, when we see people at a disadvantage. And that phone at Department of Family and Supportive Services rings off the hook. And so Commissioner Lisa Morrison Butler, thank you for all your hard work during this snowstorm. But also, over the years, for being there for us for very vulnerable people. And I appreciate everything that you have done. From OEMC all the way down, Richard Gaitis is always there on point, making sure that coordination is taking place. And there's not a commissioner on this call, from my standpoint, that has not either taken my call on a case like John Tully, Cole Stoller, or Dwayne Hightower, being proactive and calling me and making sure that the residents of the 17th ward have the things that they need, not only through this snowstorm, but also at other times, as we try to keep our communities clean, safe, and working community. But this was a bit challenging for some people who've gotten spoiled over the years. Everybody knows the blizzard of '79, and we've had one or two since then. We've just been spoiled. And we know, everybody forget, we don't do the alleys, but you all were very responsive in a quick manner to us, bringing that front loader out, making sure that key places was picked up properly so that we could keep the city going. And so I want to thank all of you for just working together. I want to definitely give a big shout out to my ward super, Antonio Reynolds, my ward superintendent, Antonio Reynolds, who's actively always out there. But I just truly appreciate the, what I call the proactiveness. You guys are so proactive to situations, more so than I've ever seen before. And I really appreciate that so much. And we were able to get through it without major problems. We just had to help seniors dig out, and we had volunteers to do that. And so I thank you all so much. Thank you, Madam President, for bringing this forward. Because although it's their job, if they wouldn't have done it well, people would be beating them up. And so we have to recognize the good that they've done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I reluctantly have to disagree with a lot of my colleagues' assessment on this last snow program. I was actively out in the streets on an ongoing basis. And I believe that this was probably one of the worst snow programs that I have seen in my 22 years as Alderman here in the city of Chicago. I don't know if we're trying to convince ourselves, or if we're trying to convince the people, that this was a great program. I'm still getting calls in my office today about streets that didn't get hit. I had several streets in my ward that didn't get hit for four days. Four days, where people were still calling my office saying that they didn't get adequate service, or a truck hasn't come down their street. And I have pictures to prove just that. And I'm sitting here looking at articles in certain parts of the city where other wards didn't get hit for four to five days after the snow program. And I just, you know, I don't want to take away from the hard work that people do on a day-to-day basis. But I can't sit here and give accolades when I know that my office is still getting calls, and I was out in the street following trucks on a day-to-day basis. And they weren't opening up the streets where, you know, there were no cars, but they wouldn't open up the street. I followed a truck that had their plow up and was just putting salt down. And there was no reason why they couldn't be moving it, and I have it all. You know, I sent all that information downtown to let them know what was going on out here in my ward. Now, after I made several phone calls, which I should not have had to make all those phone calls, then action started taking place. And so I don't know if, once again, if, you know, we're just trying to convince the people, or we're trying to convince ourselves that this was a great program, because I don't think it was. You know, there's an old saying that, you know, either you're going to believe me or believe your lying eyes. And when you look at old sentiments like that, you say to yourself, just look out and see what happened in this city in this past week, two weeks. Just look at it. Don't believe what they tell you. Believe your eyes. And you see that these was one of the worst programs that I have seen in my tenure. And I'm just going to close that the best thing that happened out of this last snow program, the best thing is that it warmed up and it started melting the snow. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President. I do recognize that it was definitely challenging to be able to clear things up after a storm like the one that we had, and the multitude and the amount of snow. We know it was challenging, but we really can't lose sight of the fact that we have folks who are working for the city tirelessly. Our superintendent had a brother who passed away due to cancer. He took three days off and came right back on. He was sleeping on the couch in the office just to get back onto the streets. And we have a lot of laborers who are out there doing the work as well. I do recognize that there were problems in trying to deal with some of the streets. We don't take care of the snow up to the curb. We still have, we will continue, it appears, to have dibs until we see something change. But I would not direct that frustration to our departments more than our city and its commitment to funding those departments. If our departments had more vehicles, if they had things to be able to clean up the sidewalks more effectively, we wouldn't get the same complaints that we were getting. And so I think when we think about where, putting our money where our mouth is, and we talk about budgets, we got some departments that have billion-dollar budgets, and we have departments that literally make our streets safer, that need more dollars. So I would say, one, thank you so much to the city workers who really don't get the thank you that they deserve, but that we also not only speak about it during a resolution, but show our support when it comes to investing in these departments, providing the resources and staff necessary to effectively get rid of the snow in a deal with situations like this, because that's what the people of Chicago have elected us to do. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Silverstein.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too stand in support of this resolution. And I just wanted to say thank you to all of the various different departments. You did an outstanding job. As we've said, the snow just kept going and going and going, and you stayed out there day and night working. And I just wanted to say that I really appreciate all the hard work. I do want to give a big shout out to my ward superintendent, Mike Hayne, who was out there through the whole thing, organizing, coordinating, and making sure that the job got done. So on behalf of the 50th ward, we say thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this resolution, thanking all of our employees who are out there dealing with two blizzards, back to back. Resolutions like this are great. They honor people's deeds. But I challenge this city council to do more than just give them a piece of paper saying thank you. We have two ordinances right now, dealing with protecting our working employees and their families, should they succumb to COVID while still working during this pandemic. Those ordinances have gone nowhere. In my humble opinion, Madam President, the best way to truly show that we care and support all of our workers is to show that we've got their back while they're still doing the job we asked them to do during these trying times. I'd ask for the committee chairman to take this up, so that we're not just giving them a piece of parchment paper, but that we're actually telling them and their families that we're with them till then.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm having technology challenges today, but I wanted to speak on this resolution with your support. I'm one of those Aldermen that has a love-hate relationship with the snow. I love to see it coming, and I get concerned because I want to make sure that we're able to clean our streets. And Streets and Sanitation has not failed us in any efforts that we have had during this snow season. I want to commend Commissioner Tully, Deputy Commissioner Hightower, Cole Stoller, Debbie De Lopez, and RCC Timothy Hall, who stood in the void when my ward superintendent was not able to. I want to thank my ward superintendent, Thomas Stovall, for his hard work. And when we had issues that couldn't be solved just by the regular pass of the street, and people needed to come back out and get the work done, or move a big pile of snow, Streets and Sanitation backed up my ward superintendent, and I'm very appreciative of that. So thank you, Madam President, for bringing forth this resolution. They deserved it. Thank you.
Alderman Riley is on the chair. Next speaker is Alderman Wagasback.
Thank you, Alderman Riley, Pro temp, Chair. Thank you. I just wanted to add my thank you to the commissioners that are here today, but especially to the workers who were out there throughout this entire pandemic. You know, the stress that it took to work throughout this pandemic for all those people that were out there was pretty tremendous. And then to get hit with the snow that we saw was just another attest to all those workers out there who fought through the private snowplows that covered up every trash can, that plowed in the alleys. And to watch and to work with these individuals as a team, I think shows the great stamina, the great effort, and the great dedication that all of them have to our residents, our businesses, and our city as a whole. Every one of us was looking out there in those alleys and seeing cans covered with two feet of snow, and workers trying to pull them out, move them, pick up the garbage, everything that needed to get done, cleaning the fire hydrants. And watching individuals continue to do that throughout freezing cold weather, freezing cold rain, sleet, snow throughout this year has just been something tremendous to watch. And I give all my support to all those workers out there who continue to do this work. And especially want to thank my ward soup, Pedro Barrero, as well, who I know, like a lot of you, was calling me at wee hours of the morning throughout the evening, keeping us up to date on what was happening with, either with the plows, with our workers, in every situation. So I want to give my sincere thanks to all of the ward soups as well. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Wagasback. The Chair recognizes Alderman Michelle Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to shortly say, very briefly, that having been around a long time at this point, and been through the snows of 1978 and 1979, and all these other blizzards, I have to say, I think that Streets and Sanitation did an outstanding job. And I appreciate that there are wards that are bigger than others. And it's hard. But our ward superintendent, which works in one of the most congested and difficult-to-get-around wards in the city, really pulled through with the help of his wonderful crew of laborers and all the other folks from Water Department and other departments who helped. And we're incredibly grateful to our ward superintendent, Marty Casey, and everyone who works with him. Through sleepless nights, long hours, and a true professional commitment to getting things done, just got the job done. And so I really want to thank you, Madam President, for bringing forth this resolution today. It's well-deserved, and sometimes it really is important to stand and recognize our city workers for the great job that they do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand and support this resolution. I want to thank all the departments that came together, showing up and showing out, spending years in Department of Streets Sanitation. I thought that, you know, I'd be used to this accumulation, but I guess I wasn't. Probably because it was hard getting the constituents to be patient and understand the process. With approximately 50 inches of snow just this season, and winter is not over with, in my opinion, Commissioner Tully, Deputy Cole, Stoller, all the ward superintendents, especially my Marco Matilla, every plow driver. You guys did an awesome job with my 95 miles of streets. We were all down to pavement. You know, it took some time, but we got there. Also, I have to give kudos to our garbage collectors, because, you know, you guys come into work, and, you know, it didn't go in vain. And I thank you so very much. I know how it is out there in that sometime below freezing weather. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to congratulate the Streets and San crews that do a phenomenal job. I was worried, I'll admit that, because of all the snow that already dropped. I was worried about the timing, knowing that the side streets were going to be frozen with low temperatures. But I was also somewhat relieved that Streets and Sanitation, I want to thank Cole Stoller, obviously, that was heading the snow program, and Dwayne Hightower, which I stayed in contact on a daily basis. Commissioner Tully, I know you were behind the scenes at Snow Command, doing what you do, so I thank you for that. It all came together. It was a little stressful. I think that we all, that have been here a while, been through a lot of storms, and we get worried about that, because our people need to get out, need to go to work, and in and about their daily lives. And I thought you guys executed very well. Equipment came out, was given to many, many wards that wanted it. We know we took it, and we used it to move stuff around. And we made lives better for Chicagoans, and especially our wards, I know that. We know we took it and we used it to move stuff around, and we made lives better for Chicagoans and especially our wards, I know that. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman Cardenas. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Madam President. I too support this resolution. I know people are just doing their job, but boy, I really believe they did way more than their job. So, you know, when the going gets tough, the tough get going, and that's what our city did in these extreme, extreme circumstances. I know I'm going to be repetitive with what everybody else said. We didn't just get like the 18 inches or two feet. We got like two feet on top of two feet, so that made things extremely difficult. I'm sure my colleagues like me, most of my calls and complaints were about alleys, which we never do. One of these years, our colleagues will figure out that we do not plow alleys, but just basically a great job by all. And I didn't need, as you know, Mayor, I didn't need this resolution to commend these people. I put you in a group X a few nights ago, commending a bunch of departments and the great job they did. And whenever you mention people, you always have the fear of forgetting people, and what did I do? I forgot about your department, so. Kind of, you kind of did the same thing when you started, so I hate to be negative, but we forgot our awesome fire department or awesome police department, how they came through under these extreme circumstances. Certainly, everybody saw a couple days ago where the guy jumped off a peak roof onto a flat roof over a wall. I mean, it was an unbelievable experience. Back in my day as a fireman, that's what I did. I was a roof man, opening roofs along with Jim Carter. You know, that's what we did, and it's a pretty dangerous job. So thank you to everybody, police and fire. Streets and Sand, unbelievable. You know, I believe Alderman David Moore talked about a proactive approach, and quite very proactive, because I got a cold storm, I got a call from Ray Laureano, which I really, really appreciated, wanted to make sure everything was okay. So I'm guessing John Tully and Dwayne and Ray just split up all the Aldermen and just making sure everything was okay with everybody. So thank you, Ray. We forgot the Water Department a little bit, too. I mean, the Water Department, between the cold and the snow, for some reason, you know, I mean, not some reason, we know why you guys get hammered. Julie Hernandez, I hope you're on this call, always come through for me and my community. I like to think I'm your favorite Alderman, but I know I'm tied with 49 other Aldermen for being your favorite. So appreciate you and all your employees at the Water Department. And lastly, our ward soups. I don't know where we would be without them. I mean, my guy was out there, you know, 18, 20 hours a day, constant contact with me. If those guys made overtime, we'd have a big, big, big budget cap to fill there. But they are truly the greatest. One thing, probably the city council could agree upon, every one of us feels we have the best ward soup in the city, so that's a great thing. But with that, I just want to commend everybody, thank everybody. Thanks for the calls. Thanks for the great job going above and beyond. You're all awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazado. The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank all the departments who helped us get through this last snowstorm. They do this every single year. They do it every single day. All through COVID, they've been picking garbage up and making sure our city runs on time. I want to take a special moment to really commend Lisa Morrison Butler, who is going on to warmer pastures. You know, her leadership at DFFS, making sure that the youth of Chicago, the homeless of Chicago, those who need government's help the most are taken care of with dignity and respect. She's left an amazing legacy of care for people, and just want to thank her and on behalf of all of our colleagues in the city, really wish her health and happiness moving forward into her new chapter. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lispada.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I'm very pleased to rise in support of this resolution to our great First Ward Alderman, the Cuban Colossus Eddie Fernandez. Incredible, incredible work. As I would say to all the soups out there, particularly the ones who call the First Ward home, it was an extraordinary Herculean effort. And as I say that, I recognize that we don't have any Hercules's out there. We don't have any demogods. There's, for all the tireless work, a lot of tired, broken bodies right now. And so to the men and women of Streets and Sanitation and of every department out there, you have our exceptional gratitude. And to our commissioner, please work with us over the next year. I know that sometimes 16-hour days are called for, but if we can work with you to expand the resources your department has available. So there's a little folks who are working hours that are a little bit more sustainable. Let us work with you on that. My hat's off to every single person who helped bring us through this season.
Thank you, Alderman Lispada. The Chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry, little technical difficulties here. Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate this resolution and I too stand in support of it, especially, you know, really stopping to recognize our essential workers, you know, that's been highlighted over this past year. You know, I agree, you know, that it wasn't ideal, but it was very good in the context of what they had to do. The snow removal was great this whole past year, the previous year, 2020. You know, we thought we were going to get some reprieve in 2021. It just hasn't happened. The tragedies and the work keep coming, just like the snow did, to be honest with you. But everyone is working hard, whether it's on Zoom or in the streets or both. So I just want to take a moment and commend the commissioners, commend their teams for just working super hard. CDA, DFSS, Health Department, who's I don't see here, but Streets and Sands. It's really been a difficult, you know, year and a half, and people have been working hard. And I just think we need to stop and recognize that, you know, 24/7 folks have been working. Just want to special shout out to Commissioner Butler. Her management is exceptional. You will be missed dearly. Wish you the best in your next endeavor and all that you do. But just, you know, really want to emphasize, you know, how all the commissioners just respond to our concerns with humility, you know, not complaining, but probably because you understand how hard it is and how hard we're working as well. So I do appreciate that. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the best soup in the city, my ward soup, Mr. Reginald Garrett. So thank you, President, for this time.
Thank you, Alderman King. The Chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I have to say that having served in this council for over 10 years is the first time that I, at least with respect to my ward, that I did not, that I hardly noticed any difference in terms of service by the Department of Streets and Sanitation during these very difficult times between the downtown and the neighborhoods. I'm very pleased with the work that was performed by the department, and put no city-wide strategy works effectively unless you have a very strong, knowledgeable and committed ward superintendent. So I want to commend my ward superintendent because he worked for several days and sometimes weeks with very little or no sleep, and to his group and staff because they did a wonderful, wonderful job in the 26th Ward. And you measured that by the number of calls that you receive in your respective ward offices, and we did receive only three calls, and we solved those problems right away. So thank you so much, Mayor, for bringing that, this resolution to the floor. And I also want to recognize the Department of Family Services because they really are year-round, but especially during these times, they really are out there trying to reach out to the homeless community and provide them with the services that we can provide to them in the hope that they are willing to accept those services. So thank you again.
Thank you, Alderman Maldonado. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. It's quite fitting that we're all on here honoring those who are the essential workers. I like the way Alderwoman King presented that. But I will disagree with Alderwoman King. I have the best ward superintendent in the city, and I thank you very much for your great work. All hours of the day and night, we were communicating. And I think that all the departments deserve a round of applause. Obviously, there were challenges, but each and every challenges was met by unique strength and work from various city departments. I got to give credit to Streets and Sand and Commissioner Tully and Tom Carney over there, really knocking some specials out for us. I want to thank CPS. Chicago Public Schools came through for us as well. So that sister collaboration was important as well for us here locally. But there's so many amazing people to thank. We were, again, we were not without challenges, but people like Julie Hernandez, who I see on the screen here, and many others really, really stepped up to help us get things done here in our ward. I think Alderman Maldonado got it right. I feel like there was a significant equitable distribution of resources. The way I understood it, there was significant communication from emails to answering of personal calls in the evening, even well into the morning. I had some early 6, 7 o'clock phone calls as well with folks. So, you know, we got to work on some things, particularly how we're going to get to plowing to the curbs. You know, I think we can do it, but it'll take some creative thinking and some creative work. But all in all, when I think about how hard people work in the freezing cold, doing their job and other jobs, I got to admit, I give our city workers a significant excellent grade for their work. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hairston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I wish I could join in this love fest for our ward superintendents. I have been without one for more than a year. And so it has been myself and my staff that have been out there driving the streets. This was not a great program for me. I am appreciative and grateful for all of our city workers, and I know how hard they work. But it is impossible to get the job done when you don't have the right support, when you don't have the right equipment. I had issues getting equipment. We had issues clearing streets. We had issues clearing our side streets. We had issues clearing our bike lanes. My office has been ringing, and it finally just stopped. It makes no sense to me that we have approximately 20 or so Bobcats and we have 50 wards. That means somebody's not going to get. We need to make this a budget action item. And I've heard many people say, well, we just don't do alleys anymore because we used to do them. And my question is, why not? Because people should be able to access their garages. They should be able to get in and out of their houses. So it was not a great program for me, but I do appreciate the work that is being done. And I have to say, I kind of resent being told that this was an outstanding program and expected to go along with it when I saw and what I experienced was different. We are not outstanding until we all are outstanding. And just because it's in a resolution doesn't make it true. I hope that we will do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Hairston. The Chair recognizes Alderman Nugent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise in support of this resolution. I'd like to express my gratitude to all the commissioners who are with us today and ask that they, of course, share my gratitude with their respective colleagues. I'd also like to thank my ward superintendent who worked tirelessly through these weather patterns. And finally, I'd actually like to thank the folks that came up into 39 for their kindness. Kindness and a can-do attitude are infectious, and we felt that in the 39th Ward. So thank you, and thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Nugent. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too wanted to speak on this resolution. While not perfect, we have definitely made some strides as it relates to our snow removal efforts here in the 28th Ward. While we are trying to figure out in these historic snowfalls how to manage certain aspects as it relates to bike lanes, which we didn't have as I came in, in the snowfall of 2011, we will continue to get better at these particular exercises. This amount of snow in such a short period of time with the freezing weather and not necessarily going through a freeze thaw cycle was a lot to deal with by any stretch of the imagination. However, we will continue to work as, not only as members of council with our ward superintendents, but also with the departments, and we appreciate the communication that we receive. Only on the west side, and this was a very unique thing, the police department called me around a snow mound. There's some people who are purveyors of pharmaceuticals made in an alley. And, you know, very unusual. However, Streets and Sand came to our rescue for those residents who are tired of that type of activity going on in and around where they live. So there are some positive things that we can talk about with what Streets and Sanitation did, as well as our other departments, not only during this time, but during the COVID emergency that we've experienced for now almost a year. So let's all pull in, let's work together, and again, not forget that we are all here for the citizens of this great city. Thank you much.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardona.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise for this resolution. I want to thank the departments that came together for the residents of the city of Chicago, especially my residents, 31st Ward. I want to thank Streets and Sanitation, a tremendous job with the snow, especially with the Water Department collaborating with them. Thank you, Commissioner Tully and Deputy Commissioner Ray Laureano, who was always on the call with me, especially Julie Hernandez, working with Streets and Sand, clearing the snow from the schools and the churches and, you know, certain streets and so forth. So kids, when they do go, when they did go back to school, the path was clear. I want to thank all the laborers that participated in this because, you know what? It's a thankless job, but as a council, I want to give them their gratitude and thank them for their job, for what they do. Especially not remiss all the superintendents in the city of Chicago. You all did an amazing job, especially my ward superintendent, Orvin Papo Rivera, who worked tirelessly and throughout these nights when it was snowing, and me on the call, and especially me going out there with him, checking things out. But I just want to thank everybody that collaborated, did the job for the residents of the city of Chicago. Thank you so much, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Cardona. The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to be associated with this resolution. Like Alderman Irvin said, it was not perfect, but, you know, I appreciate all of the hard work that all of the men and women from all of the various departments did. I'd really like to give a shout out to Cole Stoller and Hightower. You know, being proactive is something that I really appreciate. And I got a call from them a couple times during the storm to make sure that everything was going right in '24. So I appreciate that and have to give kudos to the best superintendent in the city of Chicago, John Ellis, who I would talk to at least two, three times a day. And I would be remiss if I did not say that it is going to be very difficult to continue to do the great job that was done by our difficult to continue to do the great job that was done by our Commissioner of the Department of Family Services. Commissioner, I appreciate working with you over the last two and a half years. And before that, I appreciate the work when I was not the Chair of the Education Department. You know your job so well. You are so well versed on all of the things that go on in your shop. And you have so many things going on. Your shoes are going to be tremendous to feel. Just appreciate all of the work and wish you well in your next endeavors. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. The Chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too stand in support of this resolution. And I do, on behalf of the residents in the 11th ward, want to thank all of the departments for all of their hard work, as well as especially the Commissioner of Streets and Sanitation, John Tully, and Deputy Commissioner Cole Stollard, and all of their team that made this possible. But I also want to thank my ward superintendent, Tom Donaldston, who had some big shoes to fill with my ward super tirings past your patchwork. And so he did a great job. And especially thank all the residents who came together, helped dig each other out, dig around the fire hydrants. And it was really great to see the community come together on this. Hopefully, we're done, and we move forward with spring, and we'll have baseball here. If we can get the snow to melt in the Sox parking lots, that'll be great. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson. The Chair recognizes Alderman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to be associated with this. I think that my colleagues have, we have all acknowledged, some of us, most of us have acknowledged the challenges that our Streets and Sanitation department has faced. But Cole, Tommy, TJ, Hightower, who you'll be with me later this evening for virtual ward night, Debbie, Tully, Commissioner Tully, you all during COVID have always been there. And I want to thank and acknowledge you all, not for the snow program, but for doing just a good job at doing your job. I also want to, now, I grew up in the days where there were wardyards. Some of you all may or may not remember that. That's where I did my student learning hours. And I hope that not only do we have this, but that we actually empower Streets and Sanitation because of how much we do depend on you all and the resources. So I want to be a champion for making sure that those resources that you all need are in place, and that I don't have to fuss at 2FM for not maintaining the wardyard in the 16th ward at 62nd and 3rd. I hope that Ray Navarro, you are hearing me, and you will do your job and maintain that wardyard. Like I have asked for the last 18 months, I have to give a shout out to the best ward superintendent, and that's Dante Winston. He did not take a day off during the pandemic. You are our 16th ward champion. And I'll argue with Alderman Scott later, but if you can make it in Inglewood, you can make it anywhere on Streets and Sanitation. Thank you all.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sichio Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also like to be recognized in support of this resolution. I know that there's different perspectives in how the program works, but we also got to recognize that this was unprecedented weather. So I want to thank the departments, all the departments working in collaboration, and a special thanks to our superintendent Corona, who in the line of duty, unfortunately, was also, and now he's at home recovering. So I appreciate the hard work of the superintendent. Hope that he is okay. And I also want to thank all the departments for the hard work. A quick comment that I have, just for the future is constructive, something that we need to work on together is around alleys. I think we do need to figure out the alley situation in all the wards. We still at, I think, 70% in our ward, and we still have a few issues with the garbage removal. But we've been in constant communication with the commissioner, and we want to thank you as bringing a collaborative effort. Despite the weather, thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to be associated with this resolution. Thank you for bringing this forward. We look at the record amount of snow that fell, record cold weather, all during COVID. And I think one of my colleagues mentioned earlier, we thought 2020 was over. But what we saw during this unprecedented snow was departments that are just filled with professionals. When you take a look at the way that they stepped up and were able to address all the issues to the best of their ability, I mean, remember, we're talking about 40-plus years since we've seen snow like this. And they just did a tremendous job. Every department did a tremendous job. But I want to just give a special shout out to Commissioner Tully, Julie Hernandez, Ray Loriano, my ward super, who is bothering me about making sure that we make sure they compensate them. And I think that's something we need to take a look at, especially since their salary. We worked the heck out of them, and they definitely deserve that compensation. So I want to appreciate you for bringing this resolution forward. And just my hats off to the professionals at all the departments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman. I also stand with the entire body of this council to speak to this resolution. And to be clear, everyone, this is an idea that came from Alderman Garza, which I thought was a great idea. So we moved it forward. So credit for this resolution really goes to Alderman Garza, who raised it last week in one of our meetings. Part of what makes us who we are as a city is our ability to truly weather any storm. And that certainly includes the extreme weather and intense snowfall we've experienced over the last few weeks. This last big snowfall saw 18 inches of snow fall in a 24-hour period in parts of our city. And for some of these snow days presented the perfect opportunity to work from home, watch a movie, or take the kids outside to play in the snow. But for many others, it posed a serious challenge to their safety and their ability to get around. And regardless of how you navigated the cold and snow, all of us owe an incredible debt of gratitude to the army of city workers who immediately sprang into action and literally worked night and day, sometimes sleeping in their trucks, to make sure that our streets were clear, our trains were moving, and our residents were safe and warm. So hats off goes to those workers, which include those at the Department of Streets and Sanitation, who plowed and salted our streets, but also includes folks at the Office of Emergency Management and Communications, who kept us updated, informed, and coordinated. The Department of Water Management, who kept our pipes from freezing. The Department of Family and Support Services, who worked long hours to keep warming centers open and perform check wellbeings. The Department of Housing, who ensured our electricity, heat, and other utilities remained up and running. The Department of Buildings, who investigated building code violations for not keeping proper heat and being up to code, and handled a number of building and roof collapses. I also have to thank the Chicago Transit Authority, who literally kept the trains running on time through a very, very difficult set of circumstances. And I'm especially grateful to these essential workers, as well as everyone who stepped up for their hard work to protect our residents from this wintery weather, and hopefully no more. But I suspect because of Chicago, we'll have another couple storms before the season ends. And I also want to take a point of personal privilege to thank First Deputy Chief of Staff Anne Sheehan, a wife of one, mother of three, who worked her tail off coordinating the city's efforts from her seat in the mayor's office. Thank you, Anne, for your tireless work as well. And it's thanks to the combined efforts of our great city workers, who were able to withstand any storm, that our city is truly the city that works. So thank you, one and all.
Awesome job, everyone. God bless America. God bless Chicago.
And that completes our resolutions. Mitchell for the motion.
Hold on. All right. Can I get a motion for the passage of the resolution? So moved.
Alderman Mitchell, you meant that you wanted to move to pass these resolutions?
Resolutions kind of took us off a little bit.
It's been three plus hours. So hearing no objection, so ordered, these motions will be considered. These are resolutions we've passed and the on of us. Next, Madam Clerk, let's move on to communications.
A series of communications from her honor, the mayor, to the honorable, the city council, the city of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing, together with Alderman Ramirez Rosa and Laspada, a transfer here with an ordinance imposing a demolition tax in some areas of the city. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing a transfer here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of mortgage note and regulatory agreements for the Bernard Senior Center. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, a transfer here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement for the Chicago Park District regarding expenditure of TIF funds for park improvements and playground repairs. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Budget Director, a transfer here with a Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the committee on budget and government operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, a transfer here with an ordinance authorizing the Class B tax status, class, class six B property tax status for properties located at 1100 West 37th Street and 4616-4624 West Superior. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the committee on economic capital and technology development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, a transfer here with ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned properties. Your favorable considerations of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner on cultural affairs and special events, a transfer here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended ground lease agreement with the Chicago Music and Dance Theater. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Cultural Affairs and Special Events, a transfer here with an ordinance authorizing annual programs and events, and execution of contracts with artists, vendors, and sponsors for such programs and events. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the committee on special events, cultural affairs, and recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, a transfer here with an ordinance authorizing open space impact fee, expenditure for expansion of Donovan Park. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the committee on special events, cultural affairs, and recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, the request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, a transfer here with an ordinance authorizing high-rise signs with carments allowed on individual buildings. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Ladies and gentlemen, a transfer here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the committee on economic capital and technology development. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the city council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subject designated as follows. Mayoral Executive Order Number 2021-1 concerning areas and information regarding alleged police misconduct. City Treasurer Statement of Updated Investment Policy and Guidelines, Closing Certificate for City of Chicago General Obligation Line of Credit Program. City Treasurer's Preliminary Year 2020 Annual Report Regarding Overall Income, Asset Allocation, Cash Position, and Portfolio Credit Quality. Inspector General's Report on Chicago's Response to George Floyd Protest and Rest and Civilian Office of Police Accountability Year 2020 Annual Report. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the city council of all those matters which were considered by the city council at the regular meeting held on January 27, 2021, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, or in one more newspaper, as were published in pamphlet form on February 24, 2021, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal proceedings of the city council, the city of Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring city council action. Zoning Reclassifications of Particular Areas, referred to the committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Claims against the city of Chicago, which referred to committee on finance, and correction to September 18, 2019, city council journal proceeding, which is referred to committee on committees on roles. Your honor, that concludes mayoral and clerks' communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, our committee reports. First committee, Committee on Finance, Chairman Wegasban.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the city council's committee on finance, which met on February 22, 2021. Item number one is a communication authorizing the approval of the First Amendment to the original ordinance revising the City of Joliet Water Supply Preliminary Agreement and establishing an advisory council on Lake Michigan water supply agreements. We had informative discussions with CFO Bennett, Water Commissioner Chen, and we have here a very well-crafted agreement with more legal details to be worked out in the future. This has been and will continue to be a transparent, informed agreement that puts Chicago in a good position with our neighbors in Joliet and the Southwest in a strong working relationship. The item was approved by the committee by the same roll call used to establish quorum. If no one else wishes to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by a roll call vote.
Before we go to the roll call vote, I see Alderman Brookins. Do you want to be reported as present?
There you go. Yes, young. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Laspada?
Aye, yes.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Laspada is an aye. Alderman Hopkins?
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins is an aye. Alderman Dow?
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman King is an aye. Alderman Hairston?
Aye.
Alderman Hairston is an aye. Alderman Sawyer?
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell?
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris?
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal?
Yep.
Alderman Beal is an aye. Alderman Zalaski Garza?
Aye.
Alderman Zalaski Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson?
Aye.
Alderman Thompson is an aye. Alderman Cardness?
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is an aye. Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is an aye. Alderman Burke?
Aye.
Alderman Burke is an aye. Alderman Lopez?
Aye.
Alderman Lopez is an aye. Alderman Coleman?
Give me one second.
Alderman Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis?
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea?
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea is an aye. Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor is an aye. Alderman Brookins?
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tabarez?
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez is an aye. Alderman Scott?
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Sichio Lopez?
Aye.
Alderman Sichio Lopez?
Aye.
Alderman Sichio Lopez is an aye. Alderman Maldonado?
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado is an aye. Alderman Burnett?
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Irvin?
Aye.
Alderman Irvin is an aye. Alderman Talafaro?
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an aye. Alderman Reboyes?
Aye.
Alderman Reboyes is an aye. Alderman Cardona?
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is an aye. Alderman Wagispa?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. Alderman Austin? Alderman Ramirez Rosa?
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Alderman Viegas?
Aye.
Alderman Viegas is an aye. Alderman Mix?
Aye.
Alderman Mix is an aye. Alderman Sosato?
Alderman Sosato is an aye.
Alderman Sosato is an aye. Alderman Nugent?
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an aye. Alderman Vasquez?
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an aye. Alderman Napolitano?
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano is an aye. Alderman Riley?
Aye.
Alderman Riley is an aye. Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Smith is an aye. Alderman Tunny?
Aye.
Alderman Gardner?
Aye.
Alderman Gardner is an aye. Alderman Kappelman?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Aye. Alderman Osterman?
Aye.
Alderman Osterman is an aye. Alderman Haddon?
Aye.
Alderman Haddon is an aye. Alderman Silverstein?
Aye.
Peter?
Your honor, there are 49 ayes, no nays.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson, on the motion for reconsideration.
Yes, Madam President, I motion that we reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay.
No.
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 The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wagasback.
Thank you. Item number two is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of free permits and associated fee waivers for all applications filed by the Chicago Board of Education or its contractors for buildings, facilities, and projects used for public or governmental purposes with quarterly reporting of waivers to the Office of Budget and Management. This item was approved by the committee by the roll call vote used to establish quorum. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number three is an ordinance authorizing the city of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds for certain improvements to Austintown Hall located at 5610 West Lake Street in the 29th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by the roll call vote used to establish quorum. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable favorable roll call vote for the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is an ordinance authorizing the city of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds for certain improvements at West Pullman Park located at 401 West 123rd Street in the 34th Ward. This item was approved by the committee by the roll call vote used to establish quorum. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the correspondent corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is an ordinance authorizing the city of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds for certain improvements at Donovan Park located at 3609 South Litho, uh, Lithuanica Avenue in the 11th Ward. This item was approved by the committee by the roll call vote used to establish quorum. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number six is regarding monthly settlements through the law department, and will be placed on file with the clerk. Madam President, items seven and eight consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and denials of payments of various small claims against the city. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number nine consists of two orders authorizing corporation counsel to enter into and execute settlement orders in the cases of A, Franklin et al. versus City of Chicago in the amount of $175,000, and B, Pamela Anderson versus City of Chicago in the amount of $400,000. In 9A, Franklin et al. versus City of Chicago, this was approved by the committee by the roll call vote used to establish quorum with the following exceptions for members who voted no. These were Alderman Lopez, Tabarez, Talia Faro, Roboris, Spazado, Napolitano, and Riley. And?
Mr. Chairman, I want to be voted as a yes.
Okay, Madam President, I'll make that correction there. I had Alderman Roboris as a no. He's indicated as a yes. On item 9B, Anderson versus City of Chicago, this is a wrongful death case with an initial demand made by plaintiffs of $13 million with the Department of Law now having an agreement with plaintiffs for $400,000 based on the facts and the laws. Madam President, I call for a roll call vote on this item.
Wagasback, just a point of clarification. Is this 9B or 9A?
Uh, Madam President, um, this is 9B. Um, sorry, 9. Let me go back. 9A was approved by the committee by the roll call vote used to establish a quorum with, used to establish quorum with the following exceptions. And that's, again, Alderman Lopez, Tabarez, Talia Faro, Spazado, Napolitano, and Riley.
Chairman?
If no one, right.
I think that we need a roll call vote on, on 9A.
Uh, that would, we could do a roll call on both if you wish.
Yeah, uh, I would, it recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, I was just going to ask for a roll call on both of these items.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll on item 9A, which is Franklin et al. versus City of Chicago, and the proposed settlement is $175,000.
Alderman Lasfara?
Aye.
Alderman Lasfara is an aye. Alderman Hopkins?
Aye on item 9A.
Alderman Hopkins is an, an aye. Alderman Dow?
Aye.
I'm sorry?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Alderman Dow. Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King? Alderman Harrison?
Aye.
Alderman So, or Alderman Harrison is an aye. Alderman Sawyer?
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell? Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris?
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal?
Yep.
Alderman Beal is an aye. Alderman Zelaski Garza?
Aye.
Alderman Zelaski Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson?
Aye.
Alderman Thompson is an aye. Alderman Cardness?
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is an aye. Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is an aye. Alderman Burke?
Aye.
Alderman Burke is an aye. Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis?
No, aye.
Alderman Curtis is a no. Alderman O'Shea?
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea is an aye. Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor is an aye. Alderman Brookins?
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tabarez? Alderman Scott?
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Tito Lopez?
Aye.
Alderman Tito Lopez is an aye. Alderman Malvinato?
Aye.
Alderman Malvinato is an aye. Alderman Burnett?
Alderman Burnett is an aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Urban?
Aye.
Alderman Urban is an aye. Alderman Talafaro?
Nay.
Alderman Talafaro is a no. Alderman Raboyas?
Aye.
Raboyas is an aye. Alderman Cardona?
Aye.
Aye. Alderman Wagaspack?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a aye. Alderman Austin? Alderman Ramirez Rosa?
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Alderman Vegas?
Aye.
Alderman Vegas is an aye. Alderman Mix?
Aye.
Alderman Mix is an aye. Alderman Spazado?
No.
Alderman Spazado is a no. Alderman Nugent?
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an aye. Alderman Vasquez?
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an aye. Alderman Napolitano?
No.
Alderman Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley?
Aye.
Alderman Riley is an aye. Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Smith is an aye. Alderman Tunny?
Aye.
Alderman Tunny is an aye. Alderman Gardner?
Aye.
Alderman Gardner is an aye. Alderman Kappelman?
Aye.
Alderman Kappelman is an aye. Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an aye. Alderman Osterman?
Aye.
Alderman Osterman is an aye. Alderman Haddon?
Aye.
Alderman Haddon is an aye. Alderman Silverstein?
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein is an aye. Peter?
Alderman King is an aye.
Oh, Alderman King is an aye. Anyone else? Thank you, Peter.
Your honor, there are 43 ayes, five nays.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson, on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I motion that we reconsider that vote on 9A.
All those, uh, all those in favor of reconsideration of item 9A signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
No.
Uh, the motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wagasback, item 9.
Yes, ma'am. Um, let me just rewind there. On item 9B, this is Anderson versus the City of Chicago. This was the wrongful death case with the initial demand made by plaintiffs of $13 million and the law department asking for settlement agreement for $400,000. Madam President, I will call for a roll call item, or a roll call vote on this item as well.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasfara?
Aye.
Alderman Lasfara is an aye. Alderman Hopkins?
Aye on item 9B.
Alderman Hopkins is an aye. Alderman Dow? Alderman Dow?
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman King is an aye. Alderman Harrison?
Aye.
Alderman Harrison is an aye. Alderman Sawyer? Alderman Sawyer?
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell?
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris?
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal?
Yep.
Alderman Beal is an aye. Alderman Zelaski Garza?
Aye.
Alderman Zelaski Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson? Alderman Thompson?
No.
Alderman Cardness?
Aye, no.
Oh, Alderman Thompson is a no. Alderman Cardness is an aye. Alderman Quinn?
Madam Clerk, one moment. Members of the body, can I please remind you that when you cannot speak, please mute yourself. We have some background noise from, from someone that's making it difficult to hear the roll.
That's Alderman Mix. She's the one that is not muted.
No, no, Alderman Mix is muted, sir. Um, Ald, uh, Madam Clerk, please continue.
Alderman Quinn?
No.
Alderman Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke?
Aye.
Alderman Burke is an aye. Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis?
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea?
No.
Alderman O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor is an aye. Alderman Brookins?
Nay.
Alderman Brookins, sorry.
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Alderman Brookins is a no. Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tabarez?
No.
Alderman Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott?
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Tito Lopez?
Aye.
Alderman Tito Lopez is an aye. Alderman Malvinato?
Aye.
Alderman Malvinato is an aye. Alderman Burnett?
Aye. Alderman Burnett is a aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Urban?
Aye.
Alderman Urban is an aye. Alderman Talafaro?
No.
Alderman Talafaro is a no. Alderman Raboyas?
Yes.
Raboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona?
Yes.
Alderman Cardona is a yes. Alderman Wagaspack?
Yes.
Alderman Wagaspack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. Alderman Austin, or Alderman Ramirez Rosa?
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Alderman Vegas?
No.
Alderman Vegas is a no. Alderman Mix?
Aye.
Alderman Mix is an aye. Alderman Spazado?
Nick Spazado is a no.
Alderman Spazado is a no. Alderman Nugent?
No.
Alderman Nugent is a no. Alderman Vasquez? Alderman Vasquez?
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an aye. Alderman Napolitano?
No.
Alderman Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley?
No.
Alderman Riley is a no. Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny?
Yes.
Alderman Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner?
No.
Alderman Gardner is a no. Alderman Kappelman?
Yes.
Alderman Kappelman is a yes. Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an aye. Alderman Osterman?
Aye.
Alderman Osterman is an aye. Alderman Haddon?
Aye.
Alderman Haddon is an aye. Alderman Silverstein?
No.
Alderman Silverstein is a no. Anyone I miss?
Your honor, there are 35 ayes, 14 nays.
Alderman Harris moves to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
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 The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, this concludes the report of the committee on finance.
Sir, next up, the committee on budget and government operations. Chairman Dow?
Thank you, Madam President and members of the city council, reporting for your committee on the budget and government operations, which held the meeting on February 17, 2021, and a reconvened meeting on February 19, 2021. The committee recommendation recommends passage of the following. Number one, an ordinance concerning an amendment of Chapter 2-112 of the municipal code regarding epidemi, epidemiological specimen collection and, and analysis. It was a direct introduction. I remove, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two, a substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the annual appropriations ordinance year 2021 within Fund Number 925 for the Office of the Mayor, Office of Budgeting and Management, the Department of Housing, the Department of Public Health, and the Department of Planning and Development, which includes $80 million for emergency rental assistance and $156 million for vaccination. And passage of this item by the same motion, and there is no objection.
Madam President?
The chair recognizes Alderman Burke?
Alderman Lopez moves with me to publish and defer on item two.
Be reflected in the record. The chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Mayor Lightfoot, I was going to speak on the item, just explaining my vote, but, um, it's no longer before us, I suppose. So, thank you.
We'll be coming back. Chairman Dow?
You want me to continue? Okay, item number three was an ordinance introduced by Alderman Emma Mix of the 37th Ward approving the transfer of funds within the committee on license and consumer protection for the year 2020. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And the last item, number four, is an ordinance introduced by Alderman Harris of the 8th Ward approving the transfer of funds within the committee on committees and rules for the year 2020. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
This concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, next up is the committee on health and human relations. Chairman Sawyer?
Thank you, Madam President and members of the city council. Reporting on your committee on health and human relations, which held a remote meeting on February 11, 2021, the committee recommends passage of the following items. The first is the approval of appointments for nine advisory council members for veterans and one advisory on new Americans. The appointments are as follows. The reappointment of Brandon R. Marty as a member of the advisory council on veterans. Appointment of Brent Webb, Terrell Odom, Beverly Miles, Frank Gutierrez, James Flag, Jerry Field, Elijah Bennett, Kevin Basics, all to the advisory council on veterans. And appointments to the advisory council on new Americans, Mariana Osorio. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the committee of finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The second item, 02021458, is an amendment of municipal code titles 2, 3, 4, 7, and 9 concerning rights, powers, and duties. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The third item, A2021-16, on the agenda is the appointment of Nancy Andrade as chair and member of the Chicago Commission on Human Relations. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Um, and Ms. Andrade is joining us here today. Congratulations and welcome to the team.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
The fourth item, R2021-16, on the agenda calls for the end of the U.S. embargo against Cuban trade and travel. I move passage of this item by the same motions, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
And the fifth item, SR2020-583, is a substitute resolution in recognition of India's 74th Anniversary of Independence Day. I move passage... Sorry. Go right ahead.
Madam President.
Hold on. I think the Chairman needs to move, and then I will recognize you.
I move passage of this item by the same motions, if there's no objection.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, and myself move to defer and publish item five.
So noted.
Madam Chair, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I provide an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting of the City Council, Friday, February 26 at 3:00 P.M.
Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Sorry, I had a trouble hearing Alderman Mitchell. Did he say 3:00 P.M. or 2:00 P.M.?
3:00 P.M.
Okay, thank you. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago, Section 1, because an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to COVID-19, the next regular meeting of the City Council, in accordance with applicable law, shall be conducted by video conference on Friday, February 26, 2021, beginning at 3:00 P.M., and shall provide for remote participation or remote viewing by members of the public. Section 2, this order shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage. Greg Mitchell, Alderman, 7th Ward.
Alderman Mitchell?
Move passage in the omnibus.
Action. Hold on one second. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I was just inquiring on when do we anticipate getting back to in-person meetings with the vaccine being widely available, Congress meeting in person, the state meeting in person. When do we expect the City Council to be back in person?
Alderman Beal, I'm happy to answer that question, but right now, there's a pending motion to have these matters heard in the omnibus. Will you defer your question till we finish that item of business? We're just in the process. Okay. I see the Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin. Do you have the same question?
No, I do not have the same question. You are... I guess, let me let that finish and I'll come back.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez. Again, sir, if you have a question about an unrelated item, I'd ask you to defer, and then we'll finish this business regarding the omnibus.
No, Madam Chairman, I have a question regarding the motion to the omnibus. Are we planning on adjourning following this item?
There hasn't been a motion presented by it. I would expect us to.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Mitchell, I think you were moving for passage in the omnibus.
Yeah.
All right, hearing no objection, so ordered. Let's move to the omnibus. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the same roll call vote that was used to determine quorum.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to renew my question that I stated a few minutes ago about in-person meetings.
Well, I will speak for myself, because we haven't obviously talked to the entire Council about this, but you are correct. The vaccine has been offered to, I believe, all Council members at this point. We need to make sure that we get the clerk's office also vaccinated, and I know the clerk has raised this issue. AIS has worked on a plan to accommodate social distancing in the Council chamber, so let's have further discussions, but I would believe that we would be in a position to come back by April, if not sooner. For now, we would anticipate that the March meeting would be remote, but certainly we would like to move back to in-person meetings as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
All right. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Yes, speaking to that particular notion, I know that we may be eager to jump back into the fray, but I also think that we must be cognizant of members of the public. We are a public body, a local body, the most public of bodies here in our country, and I think that we should be able to meet when the people are able to meet with us as well. While I know we may be eager to jump back into things, I do think it's important for our residents and constituents also to be able to be with us when we meet. I know that may push us out a little further, but again, we are the most local of governments, and having our constituents available and there with us, I think, would be the best course of action. That's just my personal opinion, but I'm sure we'll have further discussions on that as this moves forward. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I indulge the question from Alderman Beal. This is actually not, I don't think, the opportune time or place for this discussion, but it goes without saying, if we come back in person, we will, and there is a plan to accommodate members of the public also participating in person. I see that there are hands raised by Alderman Haddon and Vasquez, but if you're speaking to the issue of in-person meeting, I'd ask you to defer into another time and place, and we can certainly convene these discussions. Chair recognizes Alderman Haddon.
I will... I am speaking to this issue, but we'll keep my comments short then and just say, we need to have this discussion, and it should be with members of this body, and we haven't had it yet, so I look forward to that being convened. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez with the same admonition.
I also think it's something worth having hearing about and maybe discussing a hybrid model, and I will keep it at that. Thank you very much.
Didn't hear anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you... I'm sorry. I will make it brief. I will say, yeah, I agree with Alderman Haddon that this is something we should be able to talk to at a hearing and discuss, because it is in the public interest, and maybe there's a conversation about a hybrid model, and I will keep it at that. Thank you so much.
Alderman Mitchell, regarding the omnibus. All right, Alderman Mitchell, we're having difficulty hearing you. Can you speak up?
Point of information, Madam President, Alderman Moore.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. Just so we can recognize, one of our colleagues wasn't here today. You know, she was in hospital having surgery.
Alderman Moore, can I just ask you to push pause on that, so we can come to that before the motion to adjourn?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I thought we were done. Thank you. I'm sorry.
All right. Alderman Mitchell, I believe that we've already moved... You've already moved to have these matters in the omnibus pass by the same roll call vote, used to determine quorum. There's no objection, so ordered. Alderman Thompson. Motion for reconsideration.
Yes. Madam President, I motion that we reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay. Nay.
All right, the...
No.
The motion reconsider the omnibus fails. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Move to lay that motion on the table.
There's a motion to lay on the table, the Alderman Lopez's motion to return to the regular order of business. All those in favor of the motion... All those in favor of the motion to lay it on the table, please signify.
Say aye.
There's a... I got it. Alderman Lopez, I heard you.
Alderman Lopez, could you let the President finish the sentence first, please?
Madam Clerk, there is a request by Alderman Lopez for a roll call vote on the Alderman Harris's motion to lay on the table, the motion to return to the regular order of business. Can you please call the roll?
Alderman Laspada.
Second, Madam Clerk, just to be clear, what we're voting on, folks, is a motion to lay it on the table so that we can move to adjourn. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Laspada votes aye. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye on the motion to table.
Aye. Alderman Hopkins votes aye. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow votes aye. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King votes aye. Alderman Harrison.
Aye.
Alderman Harrison votes aye. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer votes aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell votes aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris votes aye. Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Beal votes no. Alderman Slaski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Slaski Garza votes aye. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson votes aye. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness votes aye.
Alderman Quinn votes aye.
Alderman Quinn votes aye. Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Burke votes no. Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Lopez votes no. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman votes aye. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore votes aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis votes aye. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea votes aye. Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Taylor votes no. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins votes aye. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez votes aye. Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez votes aye. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott votes aye. Alderman Tito Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tito Lopez votes no. Alderman Malanato.
Aye.
Alderman Malanato votes aye. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett votes aye. Alderman Irvin.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin votes aye. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro votes aye. Alderman Raboyas. Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas votes aye.
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 Alderman Cardona votes aye. Alderman Wagasback.
Aye.
Alderman Wagasback votes aye. Alderman Rodriguez Santos.
No.
Alderman Rodriguez Santos votes no. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
No.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa votes no. Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Vegas votes aye. Alderman Mix. Alderman Mix.
Alderman Mix votes aye.
Alderman Mix votes aye. Alderman Spazado.
Exposado votes aye.
Alderman Spazado votes aye. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent votes aye. Alderman Vasquez.
No.
Alderman Vasquez votes no. Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano votes aye. Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Riley votes aye. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith votes aye. Alderman Tunny.
Aye.
Alderman Tunny votes aye. Alderman Gardner.
No.
Alderman Gardner votes no. Alderman Capelman.
Aye.
Alderman Capelman votes aye. Alderman Martin.
No.
Alderman Martin votes aye.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman votes aye. Alderman Haddon.
No.
Alderman Haddon votes no. Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein votes aye. Anyone I miss? Peter?
Your Honor, there are 38 yeas, 11 nays.
The motion to lay Alderman Lopez's motion on the table is successful. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn by the same roll call vote and was applied to determine quorum.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Alderman Lopez is a no.
Hearing Alderman Lopez's objection and none other, the motion is granted. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned. We will see you on...